February 9, 2021 at 7:02 PM to order. On our agenda today, we will go through some quick updates. We have three petitions to go through. One on 201 Ridge Street, 11 Lorena Road, and the third one is 6 Winslow Road. After that, at 7:30, we're going to review the Washington and Swanton requests for proposal discussion. That is dealing with Washington and Swanton. The, um, there's been a working group to create an RFP. We'll be reviewing that and providing our feedback on that to that working group. Eight o'clock, we'll kick off our hearing that is scheduled at 8:00 PM for 654 Main Street. The majority of that hearing piece today will be hearing from the public, question and answers from them, questions to us and to the applicant. So we'll go through that at eight. We're giving about an hour and a half of time for public comment and discussion. And then at 9:30, we'll go through new business if we have any at that time to go through. There is a chance that 654 Main Street will bleed into that time and we will adjourn at 10:00 PM. Just so everyone knows, I do not anticipate, I anticipate there'll be one more meeting of 654 Main Street hereafter as engineering is not quite ready yet to give us their information. So let's kick it off with updates around town. Brian?
Sure, um, so I'm thinking about where we should begin. The, so we haven't talked about the Waterfield lot in a while. So the Waterfield lot, there's, um, the council's still, I believe, finalizing the land development agreement. And then that would be finalized at town meeting. Washington Swanton, obviously, we're talking about a little bit later at 7:30. I'm just trying to think what else would be the most notable. Last night, the local historic district study committee did go before the select board to talk about the potential or what to, you know, asking for direction about the town center local historic district. And the select board voted last night to start a new study committee to look in the Sims Corner neighborhood to potentially do an LHD in that area around Grove Street or Upper Grove Street, Fenwick area, and to put the one that in the town center on a brief hiatus. They mainly based upon the fact that although there is broad support among the town for a potential LHD in the town center, there was not broad support from the property owners and the business owners and renters, you know, all of those categories in the town center. So in the interest of time, I'll stop there.
So Brian, we never had a chance to discuss it and I was sorry we didn't. I felt that I had maybe some insight into this one and that also having, I did go to the meeting at town hall. I just think there were a whole lot of other things that could have been done and that the CBD or we'll call it town center, a center district is very different from residential district. They're just, they have a whole, legally, they're handled the same way under an enabling statute as most people know who are listening and you certainly know. But the, I guess what comes down from Mass Historical Commission is advice that generally relates to local historic districts and residential areas. But the reality also is that there are many of these districts in Massachusetts that are in commercial centers. And you, many of the properties are owned by LLCs. You're just not going to get them to respond in the same way. The point of these surveys is to find out how much opposition there is, but that's not a legal mandate, it's just recommendation from MHC. And I did think that there was a lot of learning going on in that one hearing about what that meant for the people who are residents. There were people from the Baptist church condos and there were people from, interestingly, the area around Vine Street. And they were just starting to learn about it. So I feel as if we've really missed an opportunity to discuss it and that it should not be something that we abandon. So I guess I'm just going to say that now and I hope we can return to it. It's, it's a real, it would be a real opportunity for the town to have the center as an LHD. So I'm just sorry, we just, we need, we need some opportunity. The community needs another meeting on this.
Um, Brian? Oh, I, Heather, go ahead. You can go first.
Um, I, I missed the last LHD meeting, but I thought that one of the issues was that we felt that the properties that would have been included weren't necessarily the highest at risk in town and that, um, that they were already protected in some ways, whereas, um, some of the housing in other neighborhoods is not protected and we see demolition happening.
Well, one doesn't take away from the other. So I appreciate that there's certainly been, certainly Grove Street has been a vulnerable.
Yeah.
Um, I, that doesn't negate, and again, they're not mutually exclusive. It's just the other was set up and I don't, and I think the conclusion, what we just heard in this report is, is wrong. That I believe that you're just simply not going to get a lot of cheering and saying, oh yeah, go for it from a bunch of LLCs, that's what they are. These people, they're often just a family trust that own these buildings and they're pretty far removed. So a different approach is going to be needed to move it forward. That's, I think, I guess I think that it shouldn't be just tabled. So again, it's not to take away from the interest in working on Grove Street, but they're, they're just different process-wise. And I also felt that there were people who emerged from the Baptist church condos especially who are trying to, they were taking down notes and they were getting information. This was their first time to hear about it. So sorry, this isn't, I know we don't have a lot of time devoted right now to it this evening, but I was waiting. I've been waiting for quite a long, long time to have a chance for this, for us to have some input on it.
Um, Brian, did you get any more feedback regarding the new legislation regarding the train station at Wedgemere and the half-mile radius? If it's in an LHD, does it still have to be by right?
We have not gotten any information specifically about an LHD, but I do know that it was determined that if we did, since we do have two stations, it's only one of the stations that is necessary to have the roughly 15 units per acre density and dealing also with, um, with a simple majority or a three out of five vote needed for special permits when there's an affordable component.
So, um, looking at our, for our, one of our next meetings, can you do an analysis of the center train station and look at that half-mile radius? It, I believe the Heritage District falls inside that half-mile radius. And we need to know whether that supersedes the Heritage District restrictions.
Ryan, you're muted.
He's taking notes.
Oh.
I was just nodding.
Jump in and say one thing because I have read the legislation. The actual, it's within the half-mile, but the communities then are charged with establishing a district within that radius. So it's not just a uniform radius that applies. It's once within that radius, then this district has to be created. So a district for by right, multi-unit construction. So that's, I can answer that to some degree because I read.
Yeah, we need to get an evaluation of what needs to be done and we should get on that as soon as possible.
Right.
We do not fall inside the criteria for that. Okay, I'm going to move on to the petitions. We can come back to updates as we go because I want to stay on schedule.
Yep.
And so for the petitions, we have three before us. If the planning board looks like we're going to recommend unfavorable action on any of them, we will open it up to the applicant if they're here as we have done in the last couple of meetings to save time. Otherwise, we're going to keep it to the planning board and move through these petitions with our recommendations. Sound good?
Yes.
So, Brian, want to kick off number 3927, 201 Ridge Street?
Sure, 201 Ridge Street. So this is a very interesting property. It's actually the oldest house in Winchester, constructed in 1711. This project is under site plan review in order to construct a detached barn slash garage where the total floor area of the house, the barn, a separate, a separate barn, so this would be a third structure, is greater than 6,000 square feet. Like I said, the house was constructed in 1711 and, um, and the historic building form was attached to this memo. And there also is a preservation restriction on this property that prohibits subdivision of the lot as well as any destruction of the building. So I, the proposal entails the destruction of an existing garage and the creation of a new one that when added together is what, 6,000 square feet? As long as any of the preservation restrictions are being adhered to as part of the improvements, I saw no negative effect to the neighborhood or the neighbors as a result of proposed garage and recommended favorable action based upon the view from the street.
I had a clarifying question.
Oh, I was going to go to Beth real quick just to make sure before we go. Is that okay? Beth?
Yeah, good evening. Yeah, we had a comment letter that we provided to the ZBA and planning board with some questions about the drainage design. So I haven't heard back from the applicant, but nothing that would, I think everything is within the realm of being able to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. All right, members of the planning board? Heather?
Oh, I just wanted to ask for clarification because Brian, in your notes, it said that they're demolishing something, but that they're not allowed to demolish anything. And then on the plans, I didn't see anything being demolished. So I was confused.
I'm sorry, that is definitely not true. I'm looking at my, I'm going to look at my memo to see where I said it, but nothing is being demolished. I, um, the preservation restriction does prohibit demolition. There, there is no demolition as part of, this is a, a new structure on the lot. Yep, so sorry for that.
The note said demolishing a garage, but then I didn't see that. So maybe it's just a typo.
Sorry, the total mistake.
So are we going in alphabetical order?
You can go next, Ian.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So, um, I have two concerns with this project, one of which is the taking down of several mature trees that are actually shown quite well in, I don't know if you can see this, but Brian, if you go to the pictures that were provided, that might be better than me holding them up to the, to the mic.
Yeah, I can get them up in a minute.
Yeah, I can't see myself.
I'm just getting it up, just give me a minute.
We can do it the low-tech way. Well, got it. Okay. That, that one, let's go to the top one right there. So this is the proposed location and you can see that the tree on the left is going, that large pine tree, which is some 20-some inches across, I believe, as well as two trees to the right. I guess those bushes, the shrubs are going, but also two large trees to the right. And so I am wondering if they can't change the position to avoid cutting down these tall, mature trees. And if you could go to the lower right photo in that same page? Yep, that one right there, if you could zoom in on that one. So I have, you can see how, let's scroll that puppy back up. Yep. So I believe that that tall tree, that's right almost in the middle of the picture, is one of the ones that's being taken down. And I am a little concerned about the view shed from the road. As you stand in the road, you see the house. One of the, I don't, is, are we under a site plan review here? I forget.
Yes, site plan review.
Yeah, one of the ones we do, we have to think, we have to look at what the view sheds from the public right ways are. And so here we see the house and it's hard for me to, I, I think what would happen is the garage will perhaps block some of the view of the house. I can't tell from here because I can't really visualize the size of the house. But I think it would certainly, it may impact the public view of this very important historical structure. So those are my two concerns. One, can they move the, the building so they don't have to take down the trees? And what is the real impact on the view from the road? And that's it. Thank you.
Comment from the design review committee as well? I don't know, Brian, can you bring that up? So usually we, especially because they didn't make it in time for our packets, we should be hearing about the other boards.
So just to address what Diab has raised, if, if we go a couple more sheets forward, you can flip between the site existing and the site new and you'll see that the first tree, Diab, I think stays. It's the trees between the house and the barn that actually end up being lost, I believe. There you go. You have to zoom out just a little bit more. More down, go move down, yeah. Now, if you toggle between the next slide and this slide, you'll see where the, the tree on the lower left, it's maintained. I believe that's the one you see from the street, yeah. But the, the two above that, to the right, yeah, those look like they're right at the edge of the, the new structure.
I, I believe that, and I'll have to find it, that one on the lower left is actually, there's a remark on one of the sheets that it's to be removed. Okay, so.
Okay.
If you go to that one right there and if you see, it says, uh, I wish I could, you could see my pointer, but you can see, it says, remove existing tree.
Oh, you're right. It, you're right. It says, proposed grass paver. So that's another sort of grass driveway there next to the barn.
Yeah, it just.
Okay, great.
And I, I almost, I, I did have one further thing and it's, I'm just clueless. I don't know what this chip sealed driveway is. Is that just simply asphalt?
Sorry. Which portion, you're saying which is asphalt?
Well, they're going to remove the gravel driveway and replace it with a chip sealed driveway. It's, it's almost right in the middle of the screen right now. So is that just simply asphalt?
Yeah, Diab, this is Brian. I'm the new assistant engineer. I can answer that a little bit for you.
Yeah.
That, that's kind of like, uh, it's like a coarse asphalt. It's like a very coarse, rough asphalt. So it's like an asphalt emulsion with like these chip stones that are kind of like embedded on the top of it. So it's like, uh, it's not like an asphalt road is a typical sense, but it's a lot rougher.
So when you look at it, will it look dark or?
It, I think it would look, it would have the look of like whatever chip kind of color, like the aggregate that they put in there look like. So if they're using like a limestone kind of, or like a granite color kind of, it will have like a lighter color, but if they use something that was darker, you know, it would, it would have that, but it's got, it would reflect that color.
Okay, so they, they put the asphalt down, then they spread the chips on top of it because otherwise it would just be black like the asphalt and they don't actually like go over it and squish it in. Okay, so it might, my concern is that it will be out of, um, out of context in terms of the rest of the more historical look of the property.
Yeah, it would be interesting to, I mean, I, you know, if you wanted to ask the applicant what they propose on putting down, but this would look more like an asphalt road than it would be a gravel driveway. However, it depends on what kind of chips they decide to put down. That would, that would really sway it one way or the other, but there is a little bit of variability in how it could look. But I would say it would lean more towards an asphalt surface than a gravel surface.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think it looks like crushed stone, actually. It's, um, kind of a, like a French countryside type of surface. My neighbors in Winchester have it and it's very hard to take care of, actually. When you start, when you start trying to plow it in the winter, you actually can't use a real plow. You have to use something very careful. So it, it kind of, it's just a light crushed stone look.
Thanks.
Other members of the planning board? Any, entertain a motion?
Uh, well, I can have a motion. If people are okay with putting a couple of conditions on our approval, I would move for approval with the condition that they try to relocate the structure so that it doesn't take down the mature trees and doesn't impede the view of the main house from the road.
Is there a second?
I'm sympathetic, but my main, I guess I think the most long-lasting issue is the view of the house. I don't know, the tree, I can't address the condition of the tree. That's beyond me. They're often issues and I don't want to get into it in this meeting. So I guess I would support the historic, I mean, the, I guess it was the design review committee's idea that it would be, I think, advantageous for the interest that the community has in the view of the, um, view of the house. But I'm not, I don't know about the trees. It's just, we don't know enough and I don't want to start there.
Yeah, I think that, I think the view actually more to what you're saying, the view from the street, the photograph that they took looks fairly accurate. And if you locate the mature tree there, the view of the house doesn't look like it goes away if the barn is behind that mature tree in relationship. So, um, the, the hedges, quite frankly, that the owner has in front of the house are more, you know, they've created a privacy.
Right, right.
With those hedges that I think is, um, you know, if they, if the house stays in line with the driveway or the driveway, driveway remains where it is today, then I think view of the house will remain as it is today.
But if the hedges come out in the future, then what you will see most prominently is the garage.
Right.
And since they can take those hedges down anytime they want.
Or another.
Or a future owner could.
Yeah, but the, that's because the barn is in front of the house. I mean, that means you'd have to put the barn behind the house if you needed to, if you needed to, you know, guess what they were going to do with their hedges in the future.
Well, they could move the.
I was just going to say it's interesting because I was fine with the barn, but we normally wouldn't allow a garage in front of a house.
It is a garage, not a barn.
True.
I mean, if, I don't, the topography looks somewhat steep, but there is certainly room to push the garage, let's call it what it is, a garage, towards the neighboring property. And maybe relieve, I mean, the, the gradient there looks pretty, I can't tell. It's not too horrible.
Yeah, I think there's a drop right behind the, right behind the barn that gets, um,
Yeah.
It'd almost have to come closer to the road to, to be able to move north.
Well, actually, if you look at, it's, it actually goes up behind there. Brian, if you could move back to the photographs?
You know what, rather than trying to solve this, could we?
Yeah.
I mean, we really have a very busy evening and there are a lot of questions we can't resolve here. Can we just make some general comments? And I think there's some agreement that we, um, I think there's some agreement, but it's all, it takes greater scrutiny than we can give it.
I, I did, I did put forth a motion.
There is not a, is there a second?
Just to say what the motion was, relocate the structure so this doesn't impede the view of the house from the road and as well as to try to maximize the preservation of mature trees.
Why don't we instead pose it as some questions for the ZBA and let them? Because they'll spend a whole evening on these, you know, with three or four of these. We have a very big evening ahead of us.
Well, then please pose the questions. I, I, I guess if no one's going to go for this motion, then I withdraw it. I don't, there are any other members of the board interested in seconding it?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, there's a motion with a second. Any more discussion? I personally think it would be a better design if it was pushed back slightly.
Well, I agree. Okay, go for it.
I, I think it'd be a better design pushback. You could get a better view of the main house to see that it's there. You're not looking at the barn. They are doing, they are planting eight new trees on the street side, which looks like they're getting rid of the evergreens and they're putting trees in those spots. So it will open up that lot a little bit better. But I do think pushing it just slightly back a little bit towards the left side would be, would actually be a better design overall.
So I'm looking at the elevations and that would mean cutting into the hill even more. So it's, it's, it's definitely a landscape challenge, but worth asking if they want to level the landscape or leave it historic.
Well, you could build it into the hill a little bit.
It's already built into the hill, Heather. It's pretty deep in the hill, actually.
Yeah, you were trying not moving it all the way back to the side. It's just shifting it back so you can get some perspective of the historical house and view.
Okay.
I could put it on the hill.
Um, I'm kind of with the trees because they're planting new trees, but it has to do more with the visibility of the historical house. So, uh, and I think the perspectives and the lines that you would see on Ridge Street would be better as well. View sheds to that house. So there's a motion on the table. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Hannah, aye.
Curious, aye.
Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Von Mering, aye. Motion passes 5-0. Moving onward to, sorry, now I gotta, I have all the papers from this.
It's, I'll go in, it's 11 Lorena.
You're ready? Yep.
Yep, 11 Lorena.
Petition number 3928.
So this is applicant seeking a site plan review due to a change in slope by more than 6% of an area more than 500 square feet. Property is located in RDB and contains about 48,000 square feet. So this is the construction of an in-ground pool and terrace and the regrading of the backyard with associated retaining walls. There is significant earthwork here that's proposed, um, for this project and the hope would potentially be that if it, uh, if there could be less earthwork and therefore less retaining walls, but although the work is significant, I fail to see how this could negatively affect the neighborhood or the neighbors from a visual standpoint, considering this will really not be seen very much from the front. And during most of the year, this area will be shielded from the southern and western neighbors. The only comment I really had was that arborvitae should not be used as screening for the wall or other, or other features as these trees tend not to survive after the first few winters. And the stormwater here is probably more of a larger issue based on the significant amount of impervious that's being created over the change in slope. And that is all I have.
Members of the planning board? Oh, I'm sorry, Beth? Engineering department?
Yep, so we did provide a comment letter again with some questions on the drainage analysis. And I would note that, and a butter who spoke on behalf of several butters provided a comment letter today with some questions and concerns regarding the, um, the downstream stormwater impacts, which I suggested to Janine that the applicant's engineer should respond to. So, um, you know, there is a lot of ledge out there. It's a steep slope. So I do think there's, you know, some additional work to be done to make sure that this project will not have any impacts from a stormwater perspective on the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Members of the planning board?
I just want to make a more general comment that somehow when these go to the ZBA, the ZBA should understand, and I don't know if it's for us to do, but that when the design review committee and the historical commission met, they didn't have the letter that was sent by the butters that got circulated today. So when people are on these, who are volunteers sitting on these boards and we don't. and we don't hear back from the abutters because the abutters aren't aware of these meetings, then that skews the way the outcome goes when it hits, this gets to the ZBA. It's, it's deeply concerning. So I know that's uh, maybe not directly on the topic, but it certainly comes up because of what happened today when we received this letter. It just thought, wow, we're not functioning real well here in Winchester. That's not right. Their whole point of these um, hearings and the hearing, I'm talking about the hearing, when the letters go out to the abutters, it's to give a kind of balanced um, the uh, fair view, a fair opportunity between the proponents and the um, abutters. And that's lost when the abutters are um, not included in the debate when these um, advisory boards um, are meeting. So I just, I think we've got to go back to the um, the ZBA, I mean, to the um, the billing slash zoning office and look again at that letter that goes out. So the abutters know to, when the, when these other boards are meeting. So uh, uh, that's all, I'll say for that. But we, we've got to deal, we've got to respond. It's not right. It, it, it skews um, the outcome. It does, once it gets to the ZBA.
So Maureen, I worked, well, what did we work on that about three years ago, that letter? So we just need to double check, Brian, if the letter that we had worked on with council and everything is the same one that was sent to the applicants and all the abutters. We just double check that?
Sure.
It's not, I can say that because we were the abutters or something and it doesn't explain how there are these other boards and you need to look at the town's website, government calendar. Um, and you are encouraged to, uh, you know, that these boards, it should be a nice paragraph that says these, all these advisory boards.
It wa, it was, and it also gave the uh, the email addresses and that, that's why we made the email addresses for the historical commission, design review and planning board because then you don't ever have to change that document. You could just email what, you know, they, uh, all, everyone can email each of those boards asking when they're going to meet, so.
That's not coming out.
Yeah.
That's a problem, okay, that's a, that is certainly a problem and I would agree.
But that's outside of our authority as well. We can, we can do it, we can draft the letter, we can make it, we can give it to, right, to the ZBA.
Oh, I understand, totally.
No, but.
But the loss of that, it needs to get back in, we can ask.
No, all we can do is.
Message received.
Okay.
So anyway, we got a letter today, so we're now, we've got information the other two boards don't have.
Well, I think that the letter, um, I have, are we ready for comments on the project?
Yes, let's go.
Okay, so um, I have a, I have, there's a lot about this project I don't like. This slope is huge. If you go around to the other, on the, on the street that's on the other side, um, the abutters in the back of this project are way downhill, if I recall, from my last trip down that road. And so this is gonna look like an enormous wall. The arborvitae are an attempt to shield the pool from Lorena, which doesn't really need it. And I don't know that, I don't see any attempt to try to shield this from the rear of butters. So I have a, I have a significant problem with that because I think that we do have to take into account the impact on the abutters. That's actually in one of the uh, criteria. Um, and this is an awful lot of earth that's being removed. And we went through, I don't know how many revisions of the property enforced because of the amount of earth that was being moved around. So I would like to see this reduced considerably. And those are my comments.
Would you recommend unfavorable action?
I would, but I'd like the, if there are any other members of the board who have their own opinions, I'd.
No, I agree. It, it, it struck, I actually know a pri, the prior owners are new, not personally, but this was on a garden tour, I mean, the whole thing, beautiful setting. And um, then reading the letter today was quite um, uh, illuminating. It's uh, it's, this is, this is a very uh, what? It's a, it's a, the retaining wall, everything about it, just go, and what's the purpose? What was the purpose of modifying the zoning bylaw with these um, criteria in the site plan review? And on these ver, these retaining walls and changes in grade and uh, what it does to the uh, topography was part of the purpose. It wasn't just about impact on the neighborhood, it's impact on the land.
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said, but also the photos that they included show like a really natural landscape and more of like a, a rock terraced area there. And so it's going from like a, more of a natural grade to this horrible wall. I don't, I, I feel like they could soften it somehow with, you know, multiple terraces or something that's landscaped, so it doesn't read as um, as a wall like that.
Well, uh, uh, Cheryl, do you want to have any comments?
Um, I'm actually trying to read the letter that Maureen talked about. If someone else wants to go first or go before me, sorry.
Um, so from my perspective, I think the rendering doesn't give it much help because the rendering isn't showing um, the rock walls. They're showing more like a, a man-made wall. And there are, on this site, there are the rock walls um, that are shown. So I'm not too concerned if the, if it was rocked walls, but I'm concerned that the other side of the rock wall is not landscaped. So it, the landscaping stops at the rock wall. And I can't quite fully understand, because of the site plan that we have, the assessors map actually cut off the uh, butters and where their, the butters properties stand. So Brian, are you able to pull up Zillow or map fully to see the aerial?
Not the best view.
Yeah, so um, oh, so that's the courts over there. So right now there is no structures or anything in the vicinity of where that huge wall is going.
Uh, I do not see, do you have, do you have it up on the screen, Ryan? Because I only see the uh, the plans.
He did a second ago, there it is.
I think it pulled up the GIS that would um, show the property boundaries and the building footprints.
Maybe that.
Some, somehow I'm not seeing your screen. Oh, well.
Is everybody else seeing the screen? Right now it's town and Winchester GIS?
Yep, I can.
Yep.
Do you have, are you on a delay?
I can see everyone move their head on camera. I can't see the screen change. So I'm still seeing it.
Thank you guys for recommending that. So right now, you have.
You can put the topo on, sorry, you can put the topo on too if you want, if that's easier for people to see.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still not seeing it. Nope.
Sorry, DM, I hate to say it, it, if you, if you.
It's me.
Yeah.
So uh, if I, I will, I think I'm gonna have.
And can you copy the link and send it to DM and I text?
I, you know, I may have to leave and re-enter because if my screen is frozen, I won't be able to see the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, this, yeah, exactly.
So let me do that.
What is the address of the building with one fifty-five over the top of it? The topography line, one fifty-five to the left?
I don't know, but if we're going from one fifty-five to one seventy-five, that's a twenty-foot drop. Is that true?
So it's where this, this just says parcel address Lorena Road. It doesn't actually have, it just has a parcel ID. It's weird that it's not addressed in the, in the, the GIS.
Okay. So my, my thought is you have that huge retaining wall, it's pretty invasive. The other side of it is, on the other side of that wall, there isn't landscaping to mitigate the impact of that. Um, and I am concerned about the engineering parts, but I'll leave that to engineering in terms of runoff. This whole neighborhood has had, with the amount of development they've had over the years, they've been always been having problems with runoff and the amount of water that's going on because of this, such this extreme slope going on and the rock. So I, I, it's outside of my expertise, but there are concerns that I, I would like to make sure are reviewed deeply.
Yeah, so this, I, I, I can now see the topo, thanks. Um, so this kind of underscores my concern, there's a significant drop-off there, so.
Uh, is there a motion?
Well, there seems to be.
If there's no motion, but we'd like to just um, make notes of things that we'd like the ZBA to look into and review?
Well, I would say, I would propose a motion for unfavorable action uh, based on the fact that it does not minimize, uh, what is the wording in the, in the review? Does not remove, minimize, uh, it's not soil removal, but. Does anyone remember what the words are?
Cut and fill.
Cut and fill.
Yep.
Does not minimize, cut and fill. Uh, the wall, um, the height of the wall impacts the rear of butters. Heather Hannon mentioned, um, it should, it, it does not retain the natural step landscape. And um, also, there is no screening of the uh, of the wall from the rear of butters.
I'll second the motion.
Motion to second, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Hanon, aye.
Chariot, aye.
Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Von Mehring, aye. Motion passes five oh. Moving on to the third one.
Um, I, very quickly, I know that um, so hey, point of order, I guess. Uh, but typically we, or what we said at the beginning was that if we were thinking of voting unfavorably, we would then, I know we have a timing issue here, but we usually then ask the applicant to come in. I, 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 it's obviously too late, I just wanted to make that, that point.
No, you are correct, I did say that. Um, why don't we give them a moment, um, if they are here to, um, if they have any questions or comments that they would like to give the planning board?
We really have to set times though, if people are speaking because it, we really have, I mean, we're running our own hearing with our real, it's our, our ballgame. This isn't.
Yep, um, for the applicants, um, I would say three minutes. Um, but we don't need a presentation. I think you heard what our concerns are. And if you have reasons to offset those concerns, if you could let us know.
So I'll, I'll keep this quick, I appreciate the uh, the opportunity to speak a little bit. I'm Scott Henderson, I'm the project engineer, uh, principal at Henderson Consulting. Just a few points of uh, emphasis on some of the comments that were brought up. Um, you know, we understand that topography is challenging to work with. Now, the site doesn't allow for an area to place a pool. And so, you know, in order to create a plateau, to be able to build one, you know, the attempt was to extend those existing eight to ten-foot tall retaining walls that exist behind the house now and provide the patio along the rear of the house and to extend that and face that wall in a way with a natural New England-style stone to try and, you know, emanate or pre recreate what's there now, uh, and extend that. As far as landscaping is concerned, behind the wall, uh, on the second sheet of this, the site plan set, there is a landscape layout. Um, you know, that wall is about sixty-five feet from the nearest abutting property line to the back. Um, in between there, uh, and the, the proposed wall, uh, there's some existing mature trees and a proposal to plant uh, five trees that are going to be approximately thirty feet tall at the time of planting. You know, at great expense to the applicant there, uh, putting in trees that are four or five-inch caliper, which is significantly larger than what is typically planted, uh, in an attempt to screen that from the neighbor. So, so I want to make clear that i, i, there was no ignoring the perspective of the direct abutters to the rear. Uh, in fact, it was sort of a point of emphasis, you know, that retaining wall. And we have six, you're right, we have sixteen feet to make up between the walkout at the existing back of the house and the bottom of that wall. And, and you know, the, the previous builders or the, the owners in history had, you know, built those ten-foot tall walls to create patios. Well, we're looking at an attempt to avoid removing ledge because there is significant amount of um, a ledge in that area. Place the pool as low as it can reasonably go. Um, step that wall, it is a four-foot wall at the high end directly adjacent to the house to try and put that down. And seven feet is about as, as low as you can make that wall. And with the sixty-five-foot depth between our property line and that wall, there's ample space to be able to address both planting and stormwater, which is part of the, um, you know, the applicant, application as it's presented now. We understand if there are concerns from the neighborhood. Um, and we just got this letter today as well, and the applicant did speak with some of butters. Um, they've expressed concerns. We have a meeting set up with the neighborhood on Saturday where we are going to walk the site and discuss that with them. So I think what's important to understand that the concerns of the planning board, those aren't unaddressed or, or ignored by the project team as a whole. Uh, I think quite the opposite is significant point of emphasis. Lastly, we did receive the letter from Beth uh, regarding the, the drainage. Again, you know, there are some things to adjust, uh, but as the professional designing that, I'm comfortable that we're going to come to a, uh, an ability to be able to mitigate that additional impervious area. It's about nineteen hundred square feet. There's room for infiltration. Uh, we're aware of the existing sort of flooding and ponding issues that exist at the back of these properties, um, as there is a pond at the rear of, of the abutters to the back. So, you know, understand the concerns, but they aren't, um, you know, they haven't been um, unconsidered or, or not considered as part of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Um, I think I pointed it out when I was talking about your perspectives is you actually do not show, first of all, the rock wall is not shown as a, it's not.
Correct.
As a, as you're talking about it. And also the landscaping to mitigate that is not shown as well. It is in your plans, but the clarity of how much it coverage and what it actually looks like is not in any of your perspectives. So um, you have the points of the planning board, it's just a recommendation. And when you go to the ZBA, if you can provide information to counter where the planning board's coming from, uh, you should bring it, but it sounds like you're on the right track. We don't have enough information, right, with, based on um, with some of the stuff that came in, like engineering's letter and various things like that to address those things. So right now, um, I, I would like the planning board to keep it, the motion and proceed with the next item agenda. And Mr. Henderson, you can take those notes and when you go into the ZBA, you can provide information to counter or to provide more information to deal with the concerns of the planning board, if that's okay.
Absolutely, will do.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Henderson, have a good day.
Thank you, you too.
Um, number three nine two nine, six Winslow Road. Brian?
Yep, so this is a special permit um, under three five five to construct an addition that will be located closer to the side property line and permitted as of right. Um, I believe we had seven Winslow last month, um, for a very similar project. Project um, is located in RDB ten and is undersized at around six thousand square feet. No structures on Winslow Road were located in Macris. The house was built in uh, nineteen twenty. So this is actually, the proposal entails the destruction of a rear deck and allows the extension of the house uh, towards the rear with a new smaller deck and a small uh, extension. Um, the uh, side setbacks um, are either uh, unaltered or, or, or um, getting larger, which is good. Um, the green space is, is, is increased, uh, and the hardscape is decreased. Um, I uh, noted that uh, this project, uh, I did not have any problems with this project and did not think that the neighbors had any problem either, considering we got a robust uh, neighborhood response. Thank you.
I'm going to, Heather, I just want to make, uh, recommend favorable action. Again, I'm one eye to the time, this looks fine.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I second that.
Uh, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Hanon, aye.
Chariot, aye.
Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Von Mehring, aye, motion passes five oh, favorable action. Recommendation of favorable action on petition number three nine two nine for six Winslow Road. Um, just to go back a more point of order that Brian noted as well, two oh one Ridge Street, were any of the owners here on that property?
Well, we recommended favorable action, so I think there, we're fine.
Okay, I just.
Great, great.
A recommendation to move the, the, it back slightly. So I just want to make sure if they're here, if they had a question of us, that it'd be available. All right, let's move on to um. All right, let's move on to, um, we are, we have eight minutes to our hearing. We can start Washington Swanton and we can continue that discussion after the hearing. Let me, let me get swift, switch gears and pull up my RFP that I have my notes in.
So I had a bunch of comments. I, I did read this pretty closely. Can we just jump in?
You just want to rattle them off?
Yeah, so page four. On page four, it describes how there was at the bottom. I guess if Brian can, uh, scroll down to page four. And you'll have to, uh, push in town just redevelopment, that paragraph, yes. Um, so where it ends with 2019, what it says is that a previous proposal, um, that was opposed by the neighbors that was CVS, but a subsequent mixed use project included, uh, was well received at a community meeting. Well, I was there, so were you Heather. So was Heather Hannon. I don't know who else was there, but three of us were. Um, I would like to add, the design was not reviewed by the planning board and it should not be construed as promoted in this RFP.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I was also going to, in the same section before you proceed to, I agree with that Maureen, is that says the CVS pharmacy was opposed by neighbors and a previous proposal, it was a previous application for redevelopment. I think the language in here should be corrected and was appealed, and it wasn't just the neighbor. So I think it should just say was appealed due to the two reasons. One was parking and they, it was correct. The, the appeal was found to be accurate. So due to parking and a camera, there's one other thing that the, the courts found it to be.
It was the zoning line where the zoning, the zoning line for the district was in the middle of the street and.
Yeah, I think in this, in this instance, we should not be vague, because they're making it sound like the neighbors were just, the neighbors had reason to be opposed to this. It didn't meet the zoning laws. And so it's, it's not that they're, some of them were in favor of the CVS. They just weren't in favor of certain components of it that went, the parking issues and stuff that they had mentioned. So, and it's not just the neighbor. So I think the neighbor should be taken out of it, because I, they keep getting stigmatized by this. I don't think it's fair to them either. Um, and it's not a universal all the neighbors. So I think we should just clarify that up and tighten that up to be actually more factual based, um, as well. So when I reviewed that, that's what I saw on this page. Maureen, you can keep going. I just figured since you're on this page.
So let's, um, page five. Um, it just, it's, uh, nowhere in here does it say. So let's do design considerations, um, on page five. We're not there yet. Unless I have a lag. Am I?
A lag there.
Are we there?
Yep, you can go ahead and do it.
It's just a little slow here, but it's coming up. Anyway, design considerations, um, the paragraph, uh, the Washington and Swanton property is fine. And then, uh, let's see, if you actually are looking down. Oh, okay, it's a very long first sen- uh, second sentence. Zoning relief will be necessary, fine. Um, and then, and should expect to work collaboratively with the Butters, town staff and boards. And then insert please, including the planning board and design review committee. Um, it's not in, inaccurate. It's just which are the boards? And I think these two boards need to be called out to make sure that there, it's on the record, that these are two boards that will be, um, given, um, that will be working on this project.
So it's just planning and design review boards?
I, it just including, if you think there's, um, uh, there's some that are so obvious, like engineering that, I mean, they have legal rights, whereas this should be just really clear that those boards are going to count. If you have something else. But I don't think we need to list every one that has a, a very clear legal role, but ours is advisory in this case.
We should, we should include disability access.
Okay. But again, legally, you can't really build a building that doesn't comply with ADA. So you just can't, um.
Well, if you look at.
Put it in, fine. I don't object. Let's keep going.
Okay.
Before you move out of this paragraph, Maureen, I'd like it to say a historical residential neighborhood. They are in a historical neighborhood. They even talk about how the historical site itself. The other thing, when I was looking at our center business district for the next agenda item, um, it, really the design considerations is that the building should have a tripartite, a base, a metal and a top to it. It shouldn't just be a, a big three story block. Um, so it should have articulation to it. I think it'd be important just to note that. We don't have to define too much to leave them more room for, um, design.
Heather, Heather, that's actually already in the design guidelines.
All right. You don't want it specifically called out in the design considerations?
No, I'm just merely pointing out it, it exists. If you want it, I, I thought you, I, my, my understanding was, yeah, go ahead. If you want it there, that's fine.
I get what you're saying, but the problem is this is going for zoning relief. So they're coming in under friendly 40B, so they can supersede all of our locals zoning.
Uh, but it's in, okay, the design, okay, so here's my, there's the whole section on design, which is attached to this, includes that language. So.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying. But you want it in there twice. That's fine.
I, yeah, to draw emphasis to it, but we can, if you want, if you feel it's enough, let's keep going.
No, no, it's fine. I just was pointing out it was in there. I didn't know if you realized it was already in there. That's all. Thanks.
Not, but I mean, design considerations are in there. There is an appendix. It's great if it's in two places, but I want to make sure page seven, it's the same concept. Um, selection process. And under selection process, and again, I'm not keeping up maybe as quickly as you are on your screen. Well, I've got the RFP, so I'm there, I think. Scroll down a little more. Thank you, Brian. Under selection process, zoom in, um, and it's paragraph one, two, three, four, where begins one public. It's right now at the bottom of my screen, but one public. Can you get in close up there? Yep, we're good. Thank you. We're there. So there where it says the last sentence and then one public is the beginning of the paragraph, the last sentence. The select board will also collect feedback from local boards and committees, including the planning board, design review committee and housing partnership board. I did wonder, you can put disability commission, that's fine. Um, but I also thought TTEC might be, have a place here. So, um, those are the ones I'd like to see. Brian, are you taking notes or this is being recorded? So you'll go back over it. And Nancy, of course, is backing you up.
All three of those, yep.
Yep, so we're good. So let's just keep moving.
All right. Well, our hearing is going to start in a minute, so I'd like to pause there. I also have severe, a big caveat going on with this RFP that I want to address, so um, that's, we can't do in the next minute. So let's come back to it. Can you hold right there? We're on page eight. We'll come back to this after our hearing.
Yeah, uh, very quickly, um, I would say that if everyone has comments written down already, we can just give all the, you know, we can just give those comments.
No.
I would like to come from the whole board. To those recommendations. So I'll come out of the whole board if that's, and then.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss some things as well.
So, um, I would like to come back to this and maybe this will be at the nine thirty time slot for the 30 minutes, but I think there is more. I have my own notes as well that I want to go over, um, to discuss. And also I think this is something we don't want to just push forward.
Just as a point, um, I see Dennis is here, which is great. And this, of course, Dennis has more than a little interest in this, um, too. We're all working together. So I guess we're going to, somehow we, I want to make sure that we don't, I can't even remember the agenda, sorry. But we've got to segue into a place where we can bring Dennis in as well.
Sounds good. So if Dennis can stay after the hearing for a little bit, if you're able to, Dennis, and then, uh, join us for continuation of agenda item for Washington Swanton RFP.
Yes, I would like that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dennis. All right, we are on schedule. It is 8:01. I am going to quickly move some papers around. We are, we are having a paper today. Um, so I'm going to welcome, uh, the public, uh, to the hearing of the Winchester Planning Board. Uh, for everyone who is here, typically, if you were in person with us, we would be signing a piece of paper and that'd be your sign in. As it's Zoom, you all signed in with your participant's name, which shows up in our list. So you, we'll be documenting who's here based on that. Um, I believe. Yep, everyone has their names up. Thank you so much for identifying your name, so that we are taking that as your sign in. Just so everyone knows, this meeting is being recorded by WinCam. Thank you very much. Uh, WinCam does broadcast us also on their channel and our, there's a recording of this meeting will also be available on their website. Uh, the purpose of this, uh, public hearing is a continuation of the hearing for, um, for six, six forty-eight, six fifty-four Main Street and sixty-three Vine Street. This is an application for a new construction project at the current location of the Fell's Hardware, can be, uh, store. It also is a, for special permit and site plan review under the authority of the special permit granting authority of the planning board, which is who we are. Um, I'm Heather Von Mering. I'm the chair. I actually, we started pretty abruptly this, uh, this meeting, so we didn't go around introduce ourselves. But I'm Heather Von Mering, the chair of the planning board. Along with me is Deidre Gerius, the, uh, vice chair, but also the secretary, according to the regulations of this, of the state law. We also have Maureen Meister, Cheryl Wolf and Heather Hannon. Uh, you will also be seeing a handful of other members who are here of our staff. We have Brian Zekali, the town planner. Uh, Beth Rudolph is the town engineer. And then there are also consultants that have been brought in as independent, um, on this project to support um, our review and provide us feedback that's independent. Uh, there are rules, uh, of this hearing and, uh, today we're specifically focusing on allowing the public to ask questions of the board and the applicants. Um, so I want to make sure that we follow these rules pretty clearly. When you begin to speak, please state your name, company and address if applicable. Please direct your comments and questions to me as the chair. And you come to the table in the Zoom way with, uh, muting yourself when you're called upon. And then when you're done and your time is up, please mute yourself and that returns you back to your seat. Um, I have the right to exclude irrelevant material or repetitive information. And I expect ma- that everyone maintains decorum. And, um, if you are unruly for any reason, you will be asked to leave or boot it, boot it out by our host of the Zoom meeting. Um, today, uh, I'm going to introduce the applicant, actually the applicant of record, which we actually don't talk about very often, but the applicant of record is Kevin Ryan. Uh, but there, um, there is a development team that actually has been mainly the people who've come before the planning board. And you'll probably be hearing from them and, uh, responses to your question. Um, we have Ted Toluquian, the architect, along with a large, uh, group of, uh, development team mainly led by Ian Gilefsky. Um, we have received many, many, uh, communications which have been posted online, um, and available. The board has been reviewing all those communications as they come in. Also, the consultants have received all that communication for their review as part of their process. The applicant also has been receiving copy of those as well. We have a new set of plans that was delivered to the planning board. We received them on Friday and have reviewed them for this meeting. And we also have been reviewing all the comments from boards and commissions as they review these process of, as they review this application and have those as, as well as part of our review. So to start off, I'm going to have, um, we are now at the point where we're going to go to, um, public comment. Before that though, Dennis Carlon in our last meeting asked for a brief five minutes to quickly give an overview of his, 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 uh, overview of the zoning laws. Along with that, uh, Brian Zekali, also the town planner, reviewed the whole application as it currently stands and provided a memo. I wanted to give, I'm going to give Brian first the chance to speak real quick to give his overview of the application that he and his recommendations to the planning board. And then we'll go to Dennis and then we will open it up. Brian, if you'd like to kick it off?
Sure. Um, so I'm just going to kind of try to go through this kind of quick in terms of a snapshot of where we are compared to our last time. So, um, a number of different, uh, issues have come up, um, that, uh, the first issue that, uh, was street trees. So I've been in touch with Julie Rehman Schneider of the design review committee regarding their meeting on the project and the conditions related to the street trees. Um, they said that, uh, I'm sorry, Julie Rehman Schneider said that, uh, structural soils under the sidewalk should be installed in permeable pavers in the narrow strip next to the curb if the DBW is comfortable with maintaining. So that's talking about vacuuming and sweeping these permeable pavers. So that seems like it's a, it's a question that could be, um, you know, it's still, still lingering. There would be a still, uh, approved by TBW and engineering. Um, large trees should be used that are either broader columnar and approved by DPW as well. And, um, they should maintain these, uh, street trees for, uh, for at least one to two years. It's, it's unclear if it's going to be sprinkled. So that's one, one quick question. Um, the affordable units, um, the, the, a snapshot of that, I think it actually most makes most sense, uh, a little bit later. Uh, John Sir Beer of the Housing Partnership Board is here, and I think that, um, he's been, or I know that he's been in touch with, uh, Rieko Hayashi at the, at the Department of Housing and Community Development and has, um, you know, conversation, it can highlight some conversations that happened, um, um, even today and certainly yesterday. Um, I'm going to keep moving here. So sixty-three Vine Street. So the list of conditions from John Clemson, as well as the rest of the historical commission, that, those were all incorporated, um, into the initial submission. Um, and they were, they're in my memo. Um, SSD will, is still planned not to begin work until the demolition, or just before the demolition phase for coordination and study. In my most recent memo, all I did was put in those list of conditions that have already been agreed upon by the applicant at the time of application. So scale, massing and height as this relates to resident feedback. So we've consistently heard from abutters, um, that the scale, massing and height of the proposed building is out of character with the neighborhood. Um, I believe Dennis has addressed this and may address this further, but the current zoning for the site contemplates larger structures, um, than what's proposed. And additionally, the existing multifamily buildings at thirty-five Vine, known as Stonehenge Apartments, as well as at two Elmwood Ave, um, are, you know, consistent with size are even larger than the current building. Um, so the project is, is heavily screened at six sixty-six Main Street. This is, this is adjacent to the site. It's used an example of a building that's set back from the street and therefore less imposing. Um, but it has parking on the first level, which, which wouldn't be allowed under current zoning and is over 200 feet long at four to four and a half stories. Uh, what I'm trying to say here is that it's clear that six sixty-six Main Street is, is more out of character with the town center. Um, than what it's being, that, than what the, the zoning actually contemplates. Um, the design review and the historical commission will have a full chance to review the updated package before our next meeting and, and will give comments based upon this February ninth submission. Uh, neither groups have raised concerns about the scale, massing and the height of the first submission back in October, and it has gotten smaller in size. Um, the, uh, flooding and stormwater, so conservation commission at the moment has minimal concerns, but there have been issues that have been raised with respect to the Wetlands Protection Act and the Winchester Wetlands Bylaw. And those are being worked out, um, with VHB, the consultant that's been hired. So we will, um, kind of defer to the flooding and stormwater management plan that'll be contingent upon the conservation commission's order of condition. Um, I think I'll stop there, uh, and let, uh, Dennis kind of talk about some of the updates, design wise, from, from our last time. Um, uh, Dennis, if, uh, I can bring some, uh, pictures up here, if you can, you can just guide me if you'd like.
Well, why don't I give an overview first, Brian? Uh, the latest submission is truly a series of refinements. Some pretty subtle refinements. And I have to say that this development team has constantly refined their design after each meeting, depending on input from the planning board. Um, to the point that I've never had that occur before. Um, I looked at the most recent set and, uh, as I said, it's very similar. But with improvements at each time to try to reflect what the planning board had said or, or some of my comments. I wanted to say, just to give an overview, that I started working in Winchester in 2012. Um, and we worked on Waterfield, uh, the Waterfield lot, and then we worked on Main Street and then we worked elsewhere, working with other architects to develop a strategy, which was totally based on the town's preferences and, uh, and thoughts for downtown. The resulting zoning very much reinforced that and was approved, uh, by the planning board. Um, and this building very much reflects that. Now, whenever you have single family and two family and four family housing next to apartment buildings, of course, there's a change in scale. But that is both the plan and what the zoning dictated. To the developer's credit. To the developer's credit, they modified, it's a two-step, actually a three-step complex, the historic house, of course. What they refer to as the mercantile building, the building you see in the front here, which reflects and borders Main Street. And then a similar mass, except the roof is carved into a very traditional roof scape to be more domestic in scale and less Main Street scale, as Brian is showing here. But it also takes, hold that view. It also takes advantage, if you go back to the view that was just there, to the more than ten-foot difference in the grade between Vine Street behind in this view and the area that the new building is built on, Elmwood Avenue and Lower Vine, if you will. I understand the concern of neighbors. But when you propose apartment buildings in the downtown, next to multi, single and multifamily wood-framed housing, this is the intersection. And quite frankly, this is one of the best projects in my fifty-year practice that I've seen that tries to mitigate that. Now, you can easily say, but the setbacks should be more. Well, as I wrote in my review document, my design for this area had five stories on Main Street and less behind. But the planning board pretty much said four stories is the max. I went with that as a rule. And this is the result. I think it's a very handsome, sympathetic building. No, it is not all wooden structures next to the existing wooden structures. But there is the historic house, there is the courtyard. I think it's an excellent solution and really handsomely tries to reflect the design standards. Even though I helped write them, they are some of the best and very strong design standards I've ever seen for towns of this scale, which was all about fitting in. And even though it's a different scale, being as humanistic as possible. I'm happy to answer further questions or respond to comments, but that is my feeling.
Thank you, Dennis. John Sirbeer of Housing as well wanted to speak to us, to the planning board. I think maybe it'd be beneficial to have him give his update now before we go into Q and As. John, are you here?
Yep, I'm here.
All right, if you would like to give the planning board an update and if you had questions of the applicant or of us, please let me know.
Okay. An important element of the, of this proposal is the income-limited housing that will be provided as part of this development. This housing will serve essentially moderate and middle-income families, starting with incomes at about six, in the sixty-five to seventy thousand dollar a year range. Over the past few weeks, or even several weeks, we've had numerous conversations with the development team as well as with the Department of Housing and Community Development. These conversations have been cooperative. They've been positive. They've led to a lot of improvements in the, and let me just quickly summarize the key criteria. In terms of the number of affordable units, the original proposal was for five units. We pointed out that the zoning actually calls for six, a total of six units. Four serving the eighty percent median income level, two serving the hundred and twenty percent median income level. The developers agreed to provide six units. So the current proposal, as was submitted on Friday, is consistent with the town's zoning. In terms of the bedroom mix, this is another important criteria. In the development, there's an equal number of two-bedroom units and one-bedroom units, seventeen of each, and two three-bedroom units. The original proposed affordable housing had, had an equal number of two bedrooms and one bedrooms. The Department of Housing and Community Development asked to have the two-bedroom units increased from three to four, so that these units would better serve the needs of families with children. The developer has agreed to that. In terms of floor area size, the DHCD criteria is that the size of the affordable units be proportional to the, to those of the market rate units. The initial proposals, we concluded, were on the small side. They have made, I think, two different modifications to increase the floor area size of the income-restricted units. And I, when I spoke with the DHCD staff this morning, they did not express any concern with the floor area size. So that's acceptable to them. In terms of location, the units, there are two units each on levels two, three, and four. So that is acceptable to DHCD on that. The further the units are distributed, with some facing Main Street, some facing Elmwood, and some facing the courtyard. So that's acceptable to, to the Housing Partnership Board and to DHCD. The one remaining issue is that if you look at the individual floors, there is a concern that the affordable units may be too close to one another as opposed to being distributed over the floor. And we've having conversations with both the development team on that. They have made some modifications and some changes that I received at four o'clock this afternoon. And if not, I've taken a quick look at, but haven't looked at it in any detail. And I think that both the Housing Partnership Board and DHCD will look at that in, in more detail. One technical point that came out of the last meeting was that one of the affordable units on level two is located immediately above the entrance to the parking garage. And the suggestion was made by Tool Design to include an audible sound alarm on the exit for cars, vehicles exiting from the lift. And I asked that the, that the level of that sound be such that it not carry into either the affordable units or any other residential units on levels one and two. And the development team has agreed to check into that. In commercial spaces, these alarms can be fairly loud. They don't, you don't want that same level in a, in a residential space. And so that's a detailed design that has to be, to be worked on. In, so in summary, you know, DHCD is very much satisfied. We want to check and refine the, the spacing and the location of the units on the three floors. I'd also point out that DHCD understands that there are trade-offs in the, among the criteria in terms of the floor area size, the location of the units. And as, as background, in three recent projects, in the, including Greystone, Fifteen Dix Street, and Winning Farm, none of those strictly adhere to DHCD guidelines. And they were willing to understand the trade-offs, and particularly in getting larger units sometimes for a less than ideal location. And I'm comfortable that on this project, in my conversations with Rieko Hayashi, and she's working with their legal counsel office, that they will be understanding and, you know, will be able to reach agreement. Normally, this is actually getting into more detail in depth than we normally do on past projects or have in past projects. And so, but it's, it's worthwhile to gain that level agreement. To conclude, I just want to kind of iterate the Housing Partnership Board position. We followed a number of members and have followed this project in detail. We've discussed it in our own meetings. The proposed design is consistent with the applicable CBD zoning, as Dennis Carlon and both, and Brian as well has described. I agree with Dennis that the developer team has been incredibly responsive to the requests made by the planning board, by the peer-review consultants, by other town boards and the neighbors as well. And I think we need to acknowledge that. The current design, the Housing Partnership Board feels the current design would be a very valuable and strong addition to the town center. And we highly recommend that the planning board approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Diab, you had a question for John that you put to everyone in the chat. There are people who are here on the phone who can't see the chat. So we need to make sure that all questions are spoken out loud. So Diab asked John in the chat, any discussions yet on the HOA and how the affordable units are represented? Do you want to elaborate more on that, Diab?
No, I know that at some point, when we get to the condo association or the HOA, there's always a question on what, whether they get full votes or partial votes. And there are other things like, you know, what are the prices for the parking units? And I was just wondering if we are yet at a stage where that's part of the discussion or is that going to come up later?
That's generally is addressed later. On the, on the parking, thank you for bringing that up. The developers have agreed, if the parking is unbundled from the condominium fee, they have nonetheless agreed to essentially, quote, "reserve one parking space" for each of the affordable units. The, the charge for that parking space, but the charge for the condominium fee is prorated in terms of the ratio of the sale price of the affordable unit to the market rate unit. The parking price would be prorated in the same amount, in the same.
What, what if?
In the same percentage. In terms of voting rights, the, the desire, DHCD's desire, the Housing Partnership Board's desire is that the, the owners of the affordable unit would have equal voting rights to those of the market rate units.
Will brothers have voting rights?
Okay, I think we've got a Zoom bomber.
Brian, can you please kick him out?
He, he's already out.
Thank you.
Oh, I think, I think he was asking, will brothers have voting rights?
Please take out John and Suzanne, please, as well.
I'm just trying to help here. I'm just, I'm not trying to be a nuisance or anything.
Please keep yourself muted. If you do it again, you'll be taken out to the meeting. Thank you, John. Any members have any questions for John before we proceed? All right, sounds good. All right, so let's open it up to the public. If you'd like, how we usually identify if you would like to speak is you raise your hand. And then I will call on you. You direct your questions to me. Each member will be given three minutes each. And then the questions will be addressed and we'll go to the next person straight on down the line. If you are on the phone and you are unable to raise your hand, once I've gone through everyone who's raised their hand, I will then open it up to those who are on their phones to chime in at that point. So going to all of the participants, I'll give you a moment to raise your hands if you have any questions of the board or of the applicant. And please raise your hand.
We'll do a, just sorry to interrupt Heather, just a few things. So one, yes, you use the raise your hand function. You can also use the chat function to me if you wanted to document your question. And then once we go through the, first the people with their hand raised and then through any chat, then we'll open up to anybody who's calling in. So that'll take care of, of everybody. If it's all right with you, Heather, I'll just, I'll start calling on people and letting them speak. I see the first one was Katie Scott. If you want to unmute yourself and go right ahead.
Maureen, I mean, good evening. I, okay, so I'm going to try to fit this into three minutes. I find this project very exciting and hope that it goes through. Before the housing expert leaves, I wanted to ask about, I also noticed the clustering in the last plan of the affordable units next to each other or kitty corner. That's a little bit concerning. And then I noticed that the, none of the, none of the units had, none of the affordable units had a deck, like a large deck. There is one, I think, had a little Juliet balcony, but I don't know if that is a criteria to, you know, spread the amenities to the four units. It should, should I wait for an answer or just keep going?
Are those the only questions you had or did you have other?
No, no, I had some comments about the mercantile building.
Do you want to give your comments? And then I will go to the questions.
Okay, for the mercantile building, I found that the, the building spans the entire block. And I think that the best opportunities to activate or to, to make it something that is very captivating or attractive would be the two corners, right? So the, the main and vine corner, I find, seems to have the scale, should be the public face of the gateway, as, as the architect had explained. From the scale of, you know, a car or across the street, it's, it's sort of the, the viewpoint to see the, the building as you come into town. So in, in that corner, I find that, yeah. So there, there are balconies on the corners. And I, I'm kind of repeating what Cheryl had said in the last meeting. I think the balconies do provide a very casual, maybe a little bit too casual. The, the decks seem to attract a lot of, you know, grills and furniture. And that scale seems to me not the proper way to present the building. And I find that the other, other corner on Elmwood and that, that very straight, you know, brick facade seems to speak more to that, what that corner is trying to say, if that makes sense. And even from an interior perspective, as, as a user, I think that having a deck facing west towards the courtyard would be a more attractive location. The, I think that the other corner, yes, this corner on Elmwood is, seems to be not taking advantage of its location, which is, it could be a, a place of activation. And, you know, I think of the quality of space at Thompson and Main. I think that that, the, right in front of Starbucks is the most active corner, I think, in Winchester. It's a destination. And it has a, it has a feel to it that is placemaking. Whereas this, I think that it has the potential to do that, especially with asking the town to widen that sidewalk. It could, it could really become an active space for people to come from both corners. And it should the building across the street get developed, you know, an invitation to make that even more of a spaciousness for the entire community, rather than just, you know, a consumer who has to buy coffee to, to enjoy that space. And I think just design-wise, that, that corner with the beginning of the ramp, as well as the bike racks, seems to provide a very physical and visual barrier to entry. And if that were to switch, where, you know, the patio area and the, and maybe start the ramp further in, it could really free up that corner and sort of have a public-private space with the widened sidewalk that town might put in for, for the cross and, and be a very lovely, you know, streetscape. I, I do, I do question that, that front, the cafe front, especially with the, you know, using an entire bay as stairway into the, the cafe. It seems like it's maybe perhaps twenty feet or so. Um, it seems like it's maybe perhaps twenty feet or so, uh, it just seems like a, um, loss of use to go under an overhang, to go up onto, um, an elevated plinth and then be under an overhang and then open the doors to a cafe. Seems a little bit too delayed. And then to exit and enjoy the outdoor space, you too have to go through that sequence, um, in order to, to sit. And I think that that bay, using the second bay as a sitting spot, hides it from, you know, from Elmwood, from coming up, you know, it's behind the column. Um, so activating that corner with, you know, a freed up space, um, and then the other corner with switching the patio would be my comments.
Thank you. I was just about to tell you you got time. Um, so going from there, I'm going to direct her questions to John Servier regarding the clustering of the units, um, in regards to decks. Are you reviewing the units, uh, for, uh, based on the, uh, equal distribution of those with balconies? John, if you'd like to hit yourself. Thank you.
Heather, are you asking me a question?
Yep. Uh, when you reviewed it, did you take into consideration the locations and which ones have balconies and which ones do not?
Which ones have what?
Balconies.
Oh, balconies. Uh, I looked at that once, but I have not looked at it recently. If Ian Gillespie is on the call, maybe he can answer that, or Ted Toluquian.
I think it is, um, it's more a comment to you to, uh, take a look at that and if there's an issue to.
Yeah, there's a, at least one of the units has a, a balcony or a deck.
Yeah, and I believe the, the community member was asking specifically if that is equally distributed throughout the building, that there's equal, uh, desks, decks or the balconies. All right, onward to, uh, the next. Um, I believe, Brian, you, you're keeping track of who's in order, so I'll let you.
Yeah, so it's gonna, uh, Marcia and then Lucy Jeong and then Lance Grenzback. And then that's it for the moment, uh, but please, um, please keep going. So Marcia, uh, the floor is yours.
You have three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marcia. I do live in the neighborhood, so my plea is more emotional. And listening to this meeting, I feel like everyone's pretty happy checking off boxes for the wish list of Winchester and putting them all in this one building on what is a pretty small lot and it is being covered. I would ask at what percentage? How much of the lot size is covered? Is it ninety percent, ninety-five? Because as a neighbor, it feels like it's a hundred percent when I look at it from the different angles and as a person who will walk by it all the time. I'm curious, how many of you live downtown? How many of you live under these guidelines that everyone votes for but tends not to be impacted by? I'm curious, as you're increasing the size of the unit bedrooms from two to four, how many cars are you looking at? And how many cars do you have in your household? If these units have teenagers, how many cars are we now looking at and where are you going to put them? We're a small, small neighborhood. We're already impacted by commuters, by workers from downtown, by shoppers. I don't know where you're going to put all these people, especially if you're not giving them two spots per unit. And it doesn't sound like it. You check off traffic is not an issue. That's very funny. Pre-COVID, try and drive past Fels Hardware when the high school is getting out or there's a drop-off or any activity downtown. You check off flooding, not an issue. I dare you to talk to my neighbor Maureen down the street, who within the ten years we've lived here saw her house flood and she's at a higher level than what Fels is. I really need you to stop and think. It's more than just on paper zoning. It's people you're impacting. And I just can't believe you're going to walk down the street and look up at this four-story building and go, wow, I improved Winchester. Where do you see that downtown? People go to Starbucks because you can sit outside, enjoy the trees, the, you know, the smaller scale. So I just really ask you, are any of you living under these conditions? Do any of you have one car or less? And you're really expecting that to all take place in this one building? That's it. I know you've already made your decisions from what I'm hearing, but I don't think you're listening to the neighborhoods.
Thank you, Marcia. Brian, would you like to provide the answer of how much percentage coverage of, on the lot along with how many cars are parking in this, inside the complex? Or actually, as well, um, Ted, you may be able to answer it as well.
I was, I was, I was gonna actually, uh, give it, give it to the applicant.
Sure, I can answer a couple of those questions, uh.
So this is Ted Toluquian. This is the architect of record on the project.
Thank you, um, uh, Chair. So, the question was, uh, the percentage of coverage on the lot. In our application, um, we have a calculation that shows twenty-five percent of the lot has open spaces to the sky, which translates to seventy-five percent lot coverage, not ninety percent.
I'd like to know the footprint of the building to the lot size, not open to air. Cause you can be talking about rooftop or balconies. I would like to know the footprint on the lot.
That is, that is approximately the lot coverage of the footprint of the building is seventy-five percent of lot size. I can get you that calculation. I don't have it at my, uh, fingertips at this moment. Brian, we can send that to you if that's helpful. Or, uh, if you wait, we can calculate that. Hold on.
Ted, if you want to come back to that, we can grab that from you, um, the square footage of the overall of the building. Um, but do you have the number of car parking spaces?
Yes, so we are working with our vendor and we are showing currently thirty-six to forty-one, uh, automated parking spots. And that will be, um, uh, within that range.
And Brian, in terms of the parking, um, I can grab it as well. I just need to pull it up. Do you know off the top of your head, there's a minimum and a maximum requirement?
The minimum requirement in this area is point seven five spaces per unit. And, um, you would need a waiver to go below that. They're, they're giving either one or just over one space per unit. So they are, they are fine with that provision.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, who is next on the list and?
Chair, excuse me, I do have the calculation for you if you'd like, the, um, the square foot area. The GSF of the building footprint is, uh, with, including the balcony projection is thirteen thousand three hundred and thirty-one square feet.
And is anyone going to answer if they live under these restrictions or have point seven cars for their units? Otherwise, thank you, and I wish you'd, um, really consider the neighbors.
You're asking the planning board if any of us live within the center business district? Members of the planning board? I live in precinct eight. I directly invite commercial building and commercial property, other members of the planning board?
Uh, I live in precinct eight. I'm one block off of Main Street by, uh, Glorious Pizza.
Uh, I'm in precinct three and I am not in the center.
I'm not in the center.
Precinct three, and I think the question is, do we live with these, um, uh, under the zoning? The answer is no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next question?
Uh, next question is, uh, from Lucy or comment, uh, uh, Lucy Jeong. Uh, go, why don't you unmute and go right ahead?
Okay, hi. I think everybody knows me. I'm the neighbor, lives on fifty-one One Street. Exactly close to the building that is designed on this presentation. I'm opposed to whole design. The thing is, I'm asking everyone in the, uh, planning board, have you guys lived in my building for one day during all this construction? Anyone? And consider this is the construction facing my kitchen. Then this is another construction that will be lasting long forever. I don't know how long. So have, I just asking politely, have anyone living in my house? Or I invite everyone of you to live in my house one whole day, for one whole day when the construction is going on. Because this new design totally blocked my view, while depreciate my, um, like house, influence my whole life. And also, I, I agree with like the neighbors. It's a small neighborhood. I know the town is booming the, uh, like, uh, CBD, but it's not sacrificing the, like, neighborhood's benefit. Okay, I think the town should protect every resident's, you know, benefit. We pay the same kind of tax. I just don't understand. And also you guys like hold all this public hearing. I'm asking everyone, ask me one question. I have talked, emailed, okay, what's my comment for? And what's my comment? There's no use for any of my comment. So can anyone answer me this question? Okay, if you do this kind of public hearing, then what's the use? Okay, that's, that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Members of the planning board, did you have any comments in response? Um, I actually do have a, I actually have a question regarding this, um, Ted, that the tree that, and the, the screening that originally was, uh, in place that was on, um, the last speaker's property has been removed. So there is no longer any landscaping screening between their property and the historical house. I, I would like to see, uh, that be looked into since in the last conversations we've had, there's been discussion about that tree, but it is no longer there.
Yeah, that, that tree, uh, was, I understand, not on the property, but we can further evaluate screening along those edges.
Thank you.
Are you guys talking about my tree? They dropped it down to my car, hit my car, so I have to remove that both tree.
Uh, yep, um, so that was removed, but what I'm asking for is them to look at, um, since that tree provided use of screening and it is no longer there, and it's now currently where it's at right now, is that they look at, uh, opportunities to screen on the land of their property with landscaping, since yours is gone. I'm going to move on to the next, um, person online. Brian, who is that?
I just put it in the chat. It's gonna go Lance Grenzback, then Thomas Howley, John Stevens, Jamie DeVal. You can just keep raising your hand. Uh, Lance, uh, the floor is yours.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you, Brian. Uh, thank you, Heather. Having spent last fifteen years following and participating in the debates over how the town center should be treated, how it should be developed, I think what we have here emerging as a project, I think is quite positive. And I would commend both the planning board and the developer for an awful lot of very difficult and detailed work to bring it to this point. Uh, I have two sets of comments for you. The first, several relating to design. A second set relating to the consistency with the town's policies for development of the center and development of the town as a whole. Under design, I, I note the style has, particularly of the, uh, of building, the mercantile building on Main Street has evolved. Uh, it reminds me now somewhat of the boot mill in Lowell. Uh, many years ago, I worked on the urban cultural pla- plan there, uh, and this is quite reminiscent of it. It does match somewhat, uh, the building we have at six twenty Main Street, so it provides some consistency on the area. Uh, I do think the building looks more residential than the previous versions, and I think that's a positive, uh, positive aspect of it. Uh, there's been very intense discussions, uh, not just over this project, but of others in the town over the appropriateness of the size, scale, massing and height of the buildings. Uh, it's my personal opinion that we are looking at a size and site and massing now that's quite appropriate. I went back earlier today and dug out the notes we'd taken when the planning board first started looking at this issue, dating back in twenty-ten. Uh, this area was in fact designated, uh, on the first flush to be four stories, uh, as appropriate. Beyond this, we kept it lower, but, uh, we've realized that it's four stories and I think that is appropriate for the area. I do have a suggestion on the design details that the, uh, architects and engineers take a very low, close look at their flood compensatory storage. Uh, it looks like a very elegant solution. But having spent some years worrying about the flood storage capacity pools at the hospital six twenty Washington site, which were never built. But one of the key questions came, how do you clean it out and deodorize it after you get it, after it's flooded? It washes in all sorts of river debris, rats, junk mail, everything. I don't think that's a major issue, but you want to very, take a very close look, uh, eventually on how that area gets cleared out. On the more broader question of the consistency with the town's policies, uh, I think we debated fifteen years ago and ten years ago where the focus of development ought to be in the town and we recommended and the town meeting voted in the end, that it ought to be in the center. And I think this project begins to obtain that. It retains retail on the street front. It's very important to keep our retail businesses going. It provides housing, considerable amount of it, provides affordable housing, which has been a key goal. Prevent large, unmitigatedly big three hundred unit projects from being developed in the neighborhoods. Uh, it brings that development and that housing near the transitor and the development, the center where we have bus service and rail service. And in this particular case, uh, while it's tight, it provides off-street parking, uh, and shelters that keeps it off the street. I think all of those are quite positive. I think the other thing that I would applaud the planning board and the developer for doing is basically responding to the needs of Winchester for the twenty-first century. We need to control and take proactive control of development and how the town's developing, uh, rather than being reactive. And I think this is a good first step. It's clearly one that we will debate, uh, and want to make modifications to as we move to future projects. But I think this is a very positive example of what the town can and should be doing. The alternative is to let development roll over us in ways that are quite unproductive and unappreciated. And while change is always ir- and irritant and difficulty for some of us, I think as towns as a whole will benefit from this project and others. So I would strongly recommend to the planning board that they advance this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lance. Uh, Lance had one question in there, which, um, I'm wondering if, I actually am interested in well, as I haven't heard the answer to it, is how do you clean and freshen the watery tension area?
This is Ted Toluquian. Would you like me to answer that?
I, I'm just curious. Yes, I, I'd like, that would be wonderful if you could answer that.
Sure. Um, well, a couple of things that we will be looking at detailing those, uh, surfaces with antimicrobial, uh, materials and surfaces to aid with, um, antibacterial viruses, uh, in those areas. As well as we have hatch in the courtyard location, as well as openings that allow, um, the ability to go into those areas and provide maintenance as needed. And the clearance in that will allow for, um, uh, maintenance staff to, uh, go in and take care of that, um, maintenance itself.
Thank you, Ted. Next in line is, uh, Tom Holly. Tom Holly?
Yeah, hi Heather.
Hello.
Hello, thank you. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to get a chance to add a few comments. I, um, I live in the town center. Nancy and I live in the town center. So we are, um, you know, very aware of the, you know, the retail environment and the, uh, you know, kind of vehicle and pedestrian environment. And I also, um, I also, uh, was active in the town in a way that I was quite familiar with the emergence of the revisions to the, uh, town center zoning. And it seemed to me that, you know, the, sort of at the heart of it was really, um, a vision about strengthening the vibrancy and the economy, uh, of the town center to bring more housing density, uh, into the town center, to provide more affordable housing. And to do it in a way that, um, that, that really protected, um, the, the architectural character of this center that we valued the most. And when I think about those things that animated the discussions that we had so many years ago and all the hard work that was put into, um, revising our town center, center business district zoning bylaws, um, it seems to me that this project, as you all have worked so hard on, the planning board, the town staff, uh, the engagement of neighbors, um, that this project now in fact really does represent in many ways what we had in mind and what we'd hoped for, uh, that the, that the new zoning would in fact encourage and produce. So it, it, it seems to me that, uh, and I won't, you know, there a lot of people on this call and the neighbors and, and others are commenting on, on the details of the project. A lot of people on this call and the neighbors and and others are commenting on on the details of the project. Um, i- in a way that um probably I would not add a great deal to. But it does seem to me as an overview that it preserves the retail that we that we were, we wanted to do, that it does provide housing. Um, and importantly, affordable housing. That although not perfect, uh, it it addresses uh off-street parking. Um, and it that it does so within a design that's appropriate to the historic architecture of the center. Um, I I know that many people would like to have a project of smaller scale. But I, but I do think it's questionable whether a smaller scale project is financially feasible. And and it does seem to me that the topography of the site diminishes its uphill impact. Um, so. Um, I know that a lot of this is subjective, but to me, and I care about this deeply, I live in a historic building within the center. Um, i- it seems to me that the materials and the details of the elevations get close enough to really. Be starting to imagine a twenty-first century look for the town center that feels. Um, and complements the nineteenth century architecture that we value so much. Um, so my concern now is is really that the, a lot of the things that motivated us at the time. The concerns we had about the vibrancy and economy of the center, if anything, they've become more challenged. Um, and I, and so I wonder i- if, you know. This kind of project, which through all of your hard work has now really, I think emerged into something which is truly. Something of quality and it can be a model, not not just for other development in the center, but for other towns and communities frankly. Um, you know, with a very responsive and qualified capable development team. If this project doesn't go forward, I'm not certain exactly what will. Um, and and I think if it does not go. Forward, it will make future quality development less likely. And so I think that there's a yearning and an expectation that many people in town have. That um, that something really positive happened for the town center. And I think that this project um in fact now meets that qualification and I would really hope, I think it's. Time, um, and I would really hope that the planning board would soon be able to act to approve the project. So thank you very much for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you Tom. Moving onward to John Stevens. Mr. Stevens?
I am now unmuted. I hope I can be heard, Madam Chair.
I can hear you, you may proceed.
I'll even share a picture of me. It's difficult for me to know exactly where to start, as I understand it, Madam Chair, I am limited to. Three minutes, is that correct?
That is correct.
I have any number of questions for uh the folks who have already spoken. But I don't think they can possibly be crammed into three minutes. I will offer.
Uh, Mr. Stevens, your comments are three minutes, so if you have comments you want to give, if you want to go questions, we can go through that.
All right, thank you. First of all, with respect to Brian's comments uh about thirty-five Vine Street and two Elmwood. Of course, he is correct that the heights of those buildings meet presumably, or perhaps even exceed. Uh, what is proposed for six fifty-four Main Street. The difference. Between six fifty-four and those buildings is the setbacks. There are significant setbacks on all sides, except for the. Uh, what I would say is the uh north side of two Elmwood. And as to that, of course, in the days that there were two houses. On Elmwood where now there stands thirty-six Elmwood. Uh, there was plenty of extra light uh for uh the building at thirty, uh thirty-five Vine Street. I am uh. I'm not, I'm tempted to uh recall what a former president said. What's the matter with Putin? What's the problem with three stories here instead of four? There is a difference, which I have argued and which apparently the planning board agreed with. Between the east side and the west side of Main Street in the so-called North Core. The higher structures belong on the. On the east side of Main Street because on that side. You back up to the railroad tracks. On the west side, on the other hand, you back up to. A residential neighborhood and I. Believe we have a comment by. In fact, I'm sure we have a comment by Mr. Carlon to the effect uh. I'm sorry, borders a smaller scaled residential neighborhood, I think we can all agree. So why is it necessary to put four stories on this side of Main Street? When it's clear that the other side is more, at least it is to me, that the other side is more appropriate? I'm glad to hear that the developer is willing to listen to what uh the planning board has said about the design of the building. From my perspective, the problem is not that, it is the height. And it is the mass. I'm not sure I know the difference between mass and bulk, but I'm sure I will learn. Uh, there was a comment about wood. Uh, it's not made of wood. Well, that's not one of my concerns. I'm not worried about whether or not it has wood. I'm worried about the massing and I'm worried about the height. Both are inappropriate. Is there anyone sitting on the planning board who would state that the value? Of fifty-one Vine Street? Will not be diminished as a result of this construction? Now, I suppose it's a benefit because if the property is valued by the assessor at somewhat less than it is now. Property taxes might go down. That would be a good thing. There are a number of sections of the zoning bylaw that appear to me to be relevant here. One is the purpose, we're keeping the small-town character. This is not a small-town building. This is more appropriate in Somerville. Any part of the perimeter of new development should be designed to complement and harmonize with adjacent land uses. Including scale, density, bulk and height. Seven point three point seventeen point four, height and bulk of buildings should be configured to minimize their visual dominance. The extent of cast shadows. Has there been a shadow study? The planning board seems to agree. That the historical structure at sixty-three Vine will be heavily shaded. Has anyone suggested a shadow study? I would ask specifically uh Mr. Carlon whether he thinks that's appropriate. The height and bulk, uh, again, of buildings should be configured because they affect bordering neighborhoods. New development is expected to avoid a monolithic appearance. It does say properties must maximize the hours of sunlight available to. Public open space. It doesn't say private residences, but one might think that that would be appropriate. The general standards for site plan review. Protection and preservation of existing vistas and natural features. Consistency with character and scale of surrounding billion, uh, building and neighborhoods. I don't know that anything could be plainer than that. I asked the planning board very specifically. To limit this structure to three stories. As of course is permitted by right under the zoning bylaw. There are a couple of responses to comments made earlier. Um, I think it was uh Mr. Howley who indicated. That he wasn't sure that if this project went, did not go through, that uh maybe others would not. The thought that I have on that score is that I've heard uh the developer. Not heard him directly, but I've heard him quoted to say. I can't make enough money with three stories. I ask you folks to consider the presumed reduction in. Money-making capacity for three stories versus four against what happens to the folks at fifty-one Vine Street. Uh, the last comment I have is. As far as Mr. Grensback's comment. Uh, again, I heard somebody tell me. It's not direct from Mr. Grensback. That when the new bylaw was passed, there were some objections to this or that or something else. And uh, Mr. Brent Grensback was presumably heard to say. Let's just pass this thing. If changes are needed, we will make them. Well, I'm sorry, I was asleep at the time. Now I know that changes are needed and I expect to be back. Uh, either with the planning board's support or simply on my own before town meeting. Asking for a change in the zoning between the east and west side of the building. Uh, the west side of Main Street, excuse me. Uh, I think that's it for uh my comments. I have uh a number of questions.
Uh, Mr. Stevens, I'm gonna stop you there. Let's answer one of your questions. Mr. Carlon. About a shadow study, are you concerned about the shadows on the property? And those around?
Well, clearly, when there's an interface with apartment buildings and smaller buildings, there will be increased shadows. There was nothing on the site to speak of on a one-story building. Um, yes, that is an issue. It's a given. Uh, a three-story building would cast a shadow. The question is the degree of the shadow. Um, so I I agree there, there will be an issue. There's no question. Any new building would cast a shadow. Now you can say, we want it less. This, again, my guidance is by zoning. By the overall downtown plan. And and the direction of the planning board. I've already told you what my recommendation was. Which was a taller building on Main Street, resulting in a lower building near the neighborhood. But it wouldn't be a lower building, it'd be a taller building on Main Street. That's what my urban design studies proposed.
Um, Dennis, can you clarify, when you, back in the day when you did your original studies, it was like a five-story in the front, but it was still a three and a half in the back.
Uh, it was.
Right?
It was three and three and a half.
Okay. Uh, Miss, Mr. Stevens, um, did you have other, did you have a question you would like me to direct to someone?
Well, I'd really like you to direct it to. All of the folks who have spoken in favor of this project. Uh, I think that's not going to be possible tonight. Maybe it would be another, on another occasion. And I would let, ask those members to uh respond to. Each of the quotes that I made, which are taken directly from the zoning bylaw, and then tell me. Tell the rest of us, tell the community. How this structure as proposed. Matches the aspirations set forth in the bylaw. I can certainly recite these sections. Brian has copies of what I sorted out. But I don't think we need to read them here. They're all available easily in the bylaw. I can certainly list. The uh four sections that I have cited. Uh, if folks want to take it down, I don't, you know, again, it's. I don't mean to be insulting at all. I just want people to be able to know what sections. Of the bylaw to which I refer.
Thank you. So the questions can be directed at the planning board, the applicant and town staff, along with the consultants. Uh, the planning board will be doing our deliberation in our next meeting to go through a lot of the zoning and discussing. Uh, if it does or does not meet those zoning laws and guidelines. Um, so we'll be going through that in our next meeting. I would like to make sure we continue to um have. Um, everyone who's here would like to speak, speak. I I don't know if there's, uh, Dennis has gone through his earlier, kind of going through some of those points as well. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak to that at this point? All right, so Mr. Stevens, you'll hear the planning board deliberate on that in our next meeting. And you'll hear from the planning board um when we discuss that and go through the zoning and how it does or does not meet the zoning. Uh, next was um, uh, Jamie DeVal.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Um, I have attended most of these public hearings, I believe, and I've spoken at several. And I just wanted to stand in solidarity with the neighborhood on the other side of the congregational church. I. Uh, but the central business district on Dix Terrace, so I'm right on the other side of the church. And having listened to the um public hearings, mass, height, scale. Have come up every time as the main concern of the neighborhood. And then we start talking about where the brick goes or, you know, column details. Balcony details, but it's like the big elephant in the room has been ignored, and so I, I just want to. Reinforce like what Marcia said, she apologized, said she, her comments were emotional. Maybe, but I actually think they're very objective. When I look at the drawings, I think. No, it doesn't belong to the small-scale neighborhood up the hill. That Main Street is different from going up the hill. Um, so. Yeah, I just think it's a big, it's just too big and too massive, too ambitious for the site. I've said that before, including the parking, the solution to the parking. Um, I also wanted to say it feels like people are thinking we need to do what is presented right here. Or something bad is going to happen. I have a feeling it's a forty-two B project people are fearing. But again. Just to reiterate what John Stevens was getting at, I think we can keep a lot of the hard work, the detail, the good architecture. But make it smaller by removing a story. Um, I don't think it has to be. Um, all or nothing. Because so many refinements have been made, but nothing, no refinements have been made recently anyway to the massing. Um, and I think not to um. Just prolong this conversation because I'm really reiterating what John Stevens has said, but looking at the bylaws, is this small-town character? No. And Dennis Carlon used the word that uh, I think it was his urban design knowledge. Winchester's not really an urban community. Our zoning bylaw is trying to keep. Our town feeling like a small town, and I think this building does not do it. Um, I think reducing the scale would help a lot. Um, also, there's some talk about, oh, there's tall buildings around it, there's bigger buildings around it, but generally those bigger buildings, we're not so fond of, like six sixty-six Main Street. I'm sure the people who live there love it, but it's not the prettiest building in town. I think people do feel it was a mistake. It's a little too big. Stetson Hall, everyone seems to like that. It's tall, but it has a tiny footprint. And it has twenty-seven one-bedroom studio apartments. And it sits up on the hill, and one point I've made over and over, but maybe it doesn't count. Is that to, the topography of Winchester is part of what makes Winchester Winchester. And putting the taller buildings up on top of the hill and having lower buildings down in the valley accentuate the hills and actually. I think makes it, makes it more charming. I think even at one uh. One of the public hearings, someone brought up Marblehead and it's like, whoa, Marblehead. Like part of the charm of Marblehead is the hills with the little buildings climbing the hills, and we're just totally obliterating that and filling in the topography. So, but mostly I just want to say, I think, I I think a lot has been crammed on the site. I think the architects did an amazing job doing it. But I don't think this has to be an all-or-nothing decision, that it can be scaled back. Um, and. I really, really think listening to the neighbors is the right thing to do. And not telling people, oh, this is a good design, like you should like it because it's in their, it's in their backyard. And yeah, but thank you all for your volunteer time. I don't know how you do it. Um, and that's, I guess, all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Um, next up is Craig. Is it Ray or Raby?
Robbie.
Uh, my apologies. Go ahead, Robbie. Mr. Robbie.
Hi, thank you very much. Um, I don't live in the neighborhood, um, and I do understand the neighbors' concerns with the building. Uh, I would probably have the same myself if I was in their shoes. Um, from Main Street, I think the building looks great. And this is the kind of building that Winchester's been looking for, for a long time. And I think, I know one of the concerns that Winchester's had is more affordable housing in town. And this addresses that issue. And it also addresses bringing more people closer to public transportation. So people can come downtown and shop locally and keep our downtown vibrant without having to drive downtown. They also don't have to drive to the train station to take the train into town. So it meets a lot of those standards. And, uh, unfortunately, I think with the town's desire for having affordable housing, it does require a larger, uh, footprint. And it's just kind of the circumstances of the times. Uh, so, you know, as much as three stories would be nice, to make affordable housing a reasonable solution in town, the four stories seems to be necessary. And I think unfortunately, the scale is required to allow more affordable housing. And unfortunately, we're going to see more projects like this if we want that anything developed uh, to accommodate the affordable, the affordable housing. So, uh, you know, people can ask, I have some complaints about, I understand them, but I think this is exactly what the town's looking for. I love the idea of keeping the retail on the street. It's great to keep Fells Hardware, uh, in the same location and keep it in town for a long time. There's not a lot of downtown, uh, hardware stores anymore. That's a great resource for town. Um, and also having a cafe there or something like that helps extend the, the retail out. You know, and, and right now, what's there for Fells is not a good-looking property. So I know this is big, but this is a, be a nice improvement of what we have right now downtown. So I think that's only add to the downtown. Um, you know, in terms of property values, and our properties values have gone up so much in the last five years, way more than I ever thought. I, I really can't imagine this hurting the property values, especially looking at the property that's currently there now. So, I mean, it only enhances downtown. Um, it, it is large, but I think that's part of the sign of the times. And unfortunately, that's something that, um, is needed to accomplish the things that we want to in town uh, for Winchester. So uh, I emulate or, uh, agree with a lot of things that Tom Hawley said. And, uh, those are my comments.
Thank you, Craig. Um, moving onward to MJ English.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, fantastic. Thanks, Heather. Um, I am a neighbor. I live on Wedge Pond Road. Um, I object to the massing as it reminds me, quite frankly, of the rental units on Comm Ave in Alston Brighton. Um, the town of Winchester isn't an urban environment, as Jamie DeVal stated. Um, from Vine Street, uh, where I walk daily, um, there's a view of the clock tower downtown. Um, interestingly, Craig Rabe just had that in the backdrop of his, um, Zoom call. I, I will no longer be able to see that from Vine Street. It will be completely occluded, as will the hills in the background. So, um, from an economic standpoint, from my, from my point of view, that reduces the desirability of being in this neighborhood. Um, I also have a question about the economic, um, price points of the units that will be in this building. Um, I, I'd like to know what the, the price points will be for each of the one, two, three, and four-bedroom units um, that you're, that, that, that are in the plans, um, that are producing the profit for the developer. Um, and I'd also like to know whether or not there will be a requirement that their owner occupied. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, to the applicant, there were two points of questions. The first one being the, uh, price points of the one, two, three, and four-bedroom units that are going out, um, for sale. As of this point, obviously. Do you remember the development team who would like to answer that?
Would that have been addressed to me? It's Ian Gillespie.
Yes, Ian, I believe it might be for you. I didn't want to delegate who should answer it, but I believe it might be you who can do it.
No, I, I appreciate that. I'd love to have my partner's answer. Um, but the, the answer is actually, at this point, we, we don't know, to be, to be candid. This building is probably, um, at least two years away from being built and occupied. Uh, we're in a pandemic at the moment. We know that things change overnight. Um, so the answer is, we don't know. They will be market rate for the market rate units. We do know that today, the affordable units, uh, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Winchester is based on Boston. Is that correct? For affordable? Um, John.
That is, that is correct. The Boston AMI, that's correct.
Boston AMI. So that's online. Uh, folks can look that up for the affordable. So they will be, the market rate will be market rate. I don't know what that is.
So I, my guess, my question is, what, what is it that you guys are using for your modeling in order to determine the economic feasibility of the project?
Well, I wish I could tell you I had a specific answer to that, but to be completely candid, we don't know. We haven't had approval for a project yet. So we are looking at, uh, what we have, we have a very complex project. It is not inexpensive to build, as, as I'm sure you know, and Dennis will know uh, very well, as will Ted. There's a tremendous amount of articulation. There are a lot of quality details here. So we are, we, we have a sense that we will, we're in Winchester. We know roughly where the market is today. We don't know where the market's going to be two years from now. Uh, but we do feel as though there is, uh, the, we will make a profit. I don't think we'll make an extraordinary profit. Right now, we're trying to figure out what it is we have and, um, how it'll end up. I'm not trying to evade the issue. Uh, we have a building directly next door, which I'm sure your fellow, um, townspeople would tell you, has not sold as condominiums as rapidly as we would have thought. Uh, that was priced at somewhere around nine hundred and fifty or a thousand dollars a foot. Uh, but we, we don't have a lot of sales there, so we're waiting to see what happens with markets in general. We don't know if that is related to an elevated building in a COVID environment. We think it is. Uh, but we need another six months to determine what shakes out there.
Uh, Mr. Gillespie, there was another question about, um, for you. Oh, are they going to have to be owner-occupied? Do you, have you determined that?
Uh, we haven't, uh, I, I we have not determined that. We don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Anne Marie Braco. If I pronounce your name wrong, my apologies.
Hi, uh, yeah, it's Bracco, but that's okay. Hi, everyone. I, uh, live at 23 Elmwood, um, Suite A, so I'm actually above Brueker's Bagels, so you know exactly where I live. Um, when we moved to Winchester, I guess like a year and a half, almost two years ago, I thought this was like the ideal kind of, um, kind of co-op housing with business downstairs, residents above, it's not overwhelming. They have the, everyone has their own parking. We don't interfere with each other, and we get along. These much huger buildings, you know, I, I, I don't understand like the scale, because I just feel like it doesn't fit in with this business resident type of ideal environment that we have. I mean, to me, this is much more like Lexington. Um, and that's the way I thought the town was going. Then I was kind of surprised to see the condominium building go across the street. You know, not, um, apartments, but, uh, the condominium building that has not sold all yet. You know, we have sold. We're, you know, all resident occupied. We have five units here. Um, now, the reason I mention it is just because it's really residents and business living together. When I see it like the scale, let's down there, I mean, not having a setback is really a big problem, I feel. Um, it doesn't feel like the rest of the, the buildings around here. And, um, I think traffic is such a huge issue. Whenever there are deliveries, and, you know, my husband, uh, Richard Seid, he's written three letters to the planning board. I've written two. I don't know if you've ever read any of our letters. Um, I feel like we have to talk here, or, so there are many, many points that, um, my husband has made about the traffic, and I have as well. Whenever there are deliveries being made to the liquor store, traffic stops. So I can't imagine what, what's going to happen when there's this other huge building with traffic and the garage letting out onto Elmwood. I just see, it's just going to be a huge backup. A lot of the people here, we all have jobs. We have to get out, you know, leave in the morning. We have appointments to make. I, I can't imagine what it's going to be like when there are deliveries. So I, I would hope that the planning board would look at that. I would have thought, I understand that, uh, the buildings on Main Street, you know, you want it to be commercial. Um, but I really feel like the garage should have let out onto Main Street and not onto a small street like this. It's just going to block things up for all the residents and the people that live in the various, you know, apartment, um, building as well as the condominiums there. It's just going to, I, so I don't understand how a tra- traffic study could have been done or can be done in, in times of COVID, because you don't realize what the traffic is really going to be like when there are a lot more people living on, on Elmwood. Um, and finally, I just want to say, I, I was a, uh, um, on the board of the historical society in Carlisle, where I come from. And, you know, we really, you try to respect, respect historical buildings. I just feel like that historical building is so dwarfed. And it does not, it's not going to, you know, even you look at colors or all the things you could do. That house is so, so dwarfed. If anything, I really feel strongly, it should have been moved. And, um, this tall building wrote, brought down to a much lower level. I mean, two or three stories max. And move the historical building and respect it for what it is. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I'm going to address real quickly your comment regarding deliveries. Uh, the planning board, independent of this project, but overall, the center business district has had a handful of conversations about this. Members of the planning board, if you want to chime in at all. But, uh, that falls in line with actually, uh, the select board. It's outside of the planning board's authority. And so there has been discussions about may, that we may need to, just in general, as the town grows, because there's also the project over, that's over at Waterfield, that's going in, obviously Elmwood, but along with all the deliveries and stuff, that that is backing up a lot of the traffic, that it would be helpful if the select were looked at creating, um, times when deliveries are allowed, and it's not during the high-traffic points of when school starts, or they don't conflict with that. And so the planning board has been talking about it, um, about asking the select board to look into more, getting more sophisticated in their delivery, uh, management, I guess, for the impact, all the traffic and parking along the center, inside the center business district. So I just wanted, because you mentioned that, that'll also support you, because you have a lot of deliveries coming in as well around your complex. That'll also help around, um, that complex as well. But it's just something that we've been talking about, and maybe as a planning board, we should discuss maybe sending a letter to the select board at some point, uh, very soon to say, can you please look into creating delivery hours?
I also did attend, I comment, made the same comment at one of the select board, when they were talking about. It was a, a different topic, but I did bring it up there. I just think people don't really realize, like, there's deliveries every single morning to liquor store. I don't think people realize, and, you know, if you don't live here on the street, you don't know it, you know? Um, but.
Ryan, did you have any comments in regards to deliveries and?
Well, uh, the, the first comment I was going to make was going to be related towards the traffic study that was performed in November of 2019, so it was pre-COVID, normal, uh, normal time. So, and the peer review consultant tool design did review that traffic study and offered comments that we will incorporate into, um, into the decision of any kind. The pro, um, the issue that I just wanted to mention was that a traffic study was done, and it was done pre-COVID.
Thank you, Brian. And thank you, Mrs. Bracco, for your comments. Uh, moving onward, um, it looks like we have Sally Dow, and that is the last hand that's raised. Sally, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Heather. Um, I want to say the things that I'm really excited about this project, and then I have some questions after that. So the thing that I think is great is that we are bringing housing to the center. It's a goal that we have established, and it will, um, add vibrancy and, um, economic and vitality to our center, which is something that we all are seeking. Change is inevitable for Winchester. We are close to the city, and we are under our state standards for providing affordable housing to the greater Boston area, or share of it, I should say. Um, and the fact that this building is coming in as a mixed-use residential project with affordable housing is great. I also think it's great that the developer, Mr. Gillespie, and the architect, Mr. Tolukeyan, have worked very hard, and as, as has Dennis Carlon, to respond to the design questions. Um, what Jamie referred to as, well, the bricks and the, you know, the, the window wells, whatever. Um, but the larger question that I have, and perhaps Brian can go back to the previous set of slides that brings the Main Street sort of gateway image coming down Main Street from the north. Um, and this is, um, in support of many of the neighborhood's concerns about size and scale. Yeah, this will do. Um, or maybe there's even one that's a little bit more like, sort of, right, well, this is good. Okay, so the, the, the goal that I would see, or what I would see that would be a reasonable adjustment to this would be to have the Main Street facade be what we would call a three-and-a-half-story facade, like you see along Elmwood, and like you, what you see along Vine. And the other question that I would have, um, has to do with a conversation from the last hearing about the sort of, the gaping jaw of the three open balconies, um, facing north. There was considerable discussion, which I agreed with, that they just looked like I just described it, like gaping jaws, and, and it belies the concept of a cornice at the top of the building. Um, the building itself, the four stories on Main Street, it is very close to the street. Um, and I totally agree with Katie's comments about the, um, crowding of the sidewalk and the crowding of the street relative to wanting to create a vibrant sort of public-private interface, that public realm, streetscape feel. I don't think it's been achieved there. Um, so I'm also extremely mindful of the need for any developer coming into Winchester to have it be economically viable. Um, I think that to the extent that market rate development is just, it's going to just keep going up, what, six percent a year, or whatever it is, um, to me means that developers will not necessarily have a hard time making their numbers. Um, I don't know what percentage profit is sought with a project like this. Um, but if they are willing to, um, I don't know what the expression is, curb their appetite, um, and listen to the neighbors about height and mass, and understand that as a gateway building, a three-and-a-half-story building, um, would be a better solution. Um, I, I'm still not convinced, as I said, about the, the open balconies on the end and how there's this suspended cornice that doesn't relate to the building at all. Um, and I guess my question would be, what conversations took place between Mr. Gillespie, Mr. Tolukeyan, and, and Mr. Carlon um, in response to the last meeting's conversations about reducing the scale of the mass of the building on Main Street? Um, what conversations took place about eliminating these sort of open ga- gaps in the facade of the building? Everyone likes a balcony, but I don't think it serves the look and feel of the building. Um, and I guess my last question would be, if the building is reduced to three-and-a-half Um, and I guess my last question would be, if the building is reduced to three and a half stories, it's the same number of units, the square footage would be reduced. Um, and is there a sense of what percentage of impact on profit any developer would experience from making that fairly significant change in what's proposed here? Because as it is right now, to me, it still looms over Main Street. It is an important gateway location. And I just don't think that this building, as much as I love what it's doing for the town in terms of housing and economic vitality, um, is serving the look and feel of that part of Main Street. So I think those are my comments.
Thank you, Sally. Um, there were three questions that were part of that. Uh, Dennis, um, and to the application, um, there are two questions directed to you um, in terms of was there any discussion, uh, since the last meeting in response to reduce the scale on Main Street?
To be honest, no. And as I've said before, I thought the building, if you, first of all, Main Street is changing. That's a given. That was a mandate that was told me when I started doing the studies for the town and our, other architects were as well. My proposal looked at both sides of Main Street. And this building, hopefully someday, will overlook an open space across the street defined by buildings. I had a five-story building on Main Street and a three-story behind. Um, that is what I felt was right for this, given that the town wanted to have over two hundred new apartments in the downtown, given that they wanted to strengthen the retail. So when the question of the balconies turning, uh, at the corner, and I understood the comments, Cheryl Wolf on the planning board mentioned it and, um, and others might have mentioned it, but the more I looked at it and looked at this view right as we see it, I see the open corner, the open corner created by the balconies reducing the density of the building as you go up Vine Street. And then the second facade with a slightly different colored brick broken down, those two together begin to look like townhouses facing Vine Street, slowly introducing the historic house behind. And then the new, the neighbor up the hill, right there. Thank you, Brian. And I thought that was wonderfully scaled for the situation. Um, you know, one easy way would take the roof off of the top fourth floor balcony. Let it be open to the sky. But the architect Ted Toluquian strongly believed in carrying the mass around the corner. And I, you know, this process of design review is a two-way street. In fact, with the planning board and the public, it's a four-way street. So you don't win every battle. You see the logic that the architect has and there's a lot of give and take. There are a lot of things that quite frankly, I won on, um, in changing the building. But you have to maintain the overall strength and character of the design. I didn't try to change this to be the massing I had or the designs I've done on my own buildings. I worked with what there is, saw it as very respectful. Despite, I understand the issues with the neighbors, despite that, given all the particulars that are legal documents, I felt this was a very good design. And I still feel that way. Is it perfect? No, I don't know anybody who is. But this is very respectful and it's suffering because it's the first building on Main Street in downtown in this new century.
Dennis, the second question was, did you discuss at all with the applicants the, uh, to eliminate the gaps at the, this corner perspective that we're looking at, that the overhanging cornice?
I, I just, I just addressed it. Uh, we talked about it. I suggested the balconies be put on the back corner where there's two next to the wooden house, where there's two, um, yes, in that location. And they felt that, um, that would overshadow the historic house and the neighborhood more so. I looked at the floor plans, you know, this isn't just facade work, it has to work with the inside of the building. And that floor plan, I agree, this is the proper place for it. Um, sure, we discussed it. And in the end, I concluded that this was the right way to do it. For the reasons I said answering the first question. It breaks the scale down as you go up Vine Street.
Um, while we're talking about the balconies, I actually had a question for you as well about the gaps that they're, they're referring to. Cause there's nothing there holding up that corner visually. And so is, and I never brought it up, but I just, I'm gonna bring it up now, is if you did, instead of having it wide open, you did it as frames with screens, you would give the visual of that corner being supported and still have the prominent corner with the balcony. Um, I don't know, it's just something that came up as a design concept to help. They know a lot of people are feeling uncomfortable about this corner overhanging with no support, right? Visually, it's hanging up there. But that's one way I thought of how you could do it. You still get the patterns of, to mimic the windows, but it's actually screened, so you get the open view, but.
Structurally, this can certainly happen. And most balconies in nineteen sixty, seventy, eighties buildings just project out without any columns, eight feet. So it's not something unusual. Um, you know, I, I, my feeling is the architect felt strongly about this. I think it's a very handsome building. I think once it's built, people will feel better. The fact that it's number one, it puts this building with a target on it. I understand all the comments. I wrote the standards, the design standards with, with the planning board acceptance. But you have to look at the whole picture and that includes the plans. And again, people were saying they wanted Vine Street to be broken down in scale. And look what the architect has done. He's pushed the second expression of brick building back. It's not in the same plane as the corner. He's put a slanted roof on it. And he's, he has the balconies breaking up the corner, so it's not a massive corner. Look at that view. I think that's exceedingly successful from a town design point of view.
Thank you, Dennis. The other question was to the applicants. Um, is if you went down to a three and a half from a four, um, profit loss, I, I don't anticipate you actually have that answer, but if you did, I wanted just to make sure it was asked as it was requested.
Uh, no, Madam Chair, I don't have any answer to that.
Thank you. Um, going forward, um, there are two people, uh, individuals who are on this call who are identified as on their phone without video, who, um, if they wanted to speak, um, they can unmute themselves. Um, I'll give you about, uh, twenty seconds. So mute yourself if you had a question of those two individuals. Otherwise, we will move on.
Uh, one of them is part of the applicant team. Um, so I, I don't think.
Yeah, I think if you haven't found your mute, if for any reason anyone else would like to provide comments or feedback to the planning board, please know we are reading everything, we are checking everything and you can reach all of us at theplanningboard@winchester.us if you have any further comments, uh, or things that you would like us to take into consideration. At this moment, I would take into a motion of the board to end public input.
I'm so moved and we'll have, uh, make a motion to continue the hearing to a time certain and Brian will have to help me.
Do you wanna do that one or let's do it as two separate? Can we do it as two separate votes, Maureen?
Uh, I guess so.
Um, so there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Hannah, aye.
Chariot's aye.
Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Fun Marying, aye. Five oh. Uh, the board is closing public input in our, and then in our next time certain, we will do a vote in a minute on that. But in our next time certain, we will begin our deliberations. Um, and go, uh, forward with step thirteen and fourteen in our hearing procedures. Um, I would like to entertain a motion to continue to a time certain. Uh, Brian, did you have a recommendation of when that would be?
Um, I think doing it this eight o'clock timeframe gives us time before as well as after to conduct business. So I recommend the twenty-third at eight o'clock.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
I just wanna confirm that, uh, town engineering will at that point be able to provide us their feedback?
Yes, I believe they're, um.
So, I mean, the, the applicant hasn't provided responses to the, um, to the peer review comments. Um, and you know, this is a very complicated drainage and flooding issue and I, I'm relying fully on the peer reviewers to ensure that what is being done meets the state and federal standards. So I won't have any comments to provide on that. And really, it's, you know, again, it's the comments are coming from the peer reviewer and those issues have not been resolved. Um, and I don't believe, I believe the CONCOM hearing has been continued till February twenty-third. Um, so I'll, I'll have some comments on other items, uh, you know, water, sewer connections, um, maybe some sidewalk comments. But the, the crux of it is the, the making sure that they're meeting the, you know, the state and federal requirements with respect to flooding um, and other issues. And, and that is solely in the hands of the peer reviewers at this point.
So to the application team, uh, the engineering is awaiting your response to your peer review. Um, I don't think the planning board should continue the hearing until, um, that is complete at this point. Um, and so would it be best, uh, to postpone, uh, that date to a different further out, so you have ample time to respond to the peer review? That's a question to the application team.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here, but I'm hoping Beal's associates may be as well, uh, because they have been interacting, um, with the peer reviewer, whom we know quite well. And Beth, I, 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 there's nobody I respect more in the Winchester hierarchy than Beth Rudolph. She does a phenomenal job. But Beth, uh, we have responded to VHB. I believe in, in some detail, but that's.
I think, I guess I meant more, less of a response as like revised plans, right? So they, they have, they're expecting a whole nother set of documents to review prior to the next Conservation Commission meeting. Uh, that, that is the response, you know, I, maybe you've provided kind of written responses um, to their comments, but you know, new project documents to support those comments, I guess, is the request.
Well, two thoughts. Certainly, we will do that if, uh, Todd Mori or, or Larry Beals is on. Perhaps they can answer with more specificity, but we, uh, I believe where we are, there, there's sort of two issues here. One is the whole calculation of compensatory flood storage. Uh, I don't think there's any issue about that whatsoever. The second is the, this highly technical question of unimpeded flow of floodwaters into the compensatory flood storage. Because we are proposing, I wouldn't say it's a highly innovative design, but it's, it's simply, i- i- it's not a common design. One of the Conservation Commission members said, uh, that this may be an answer, a solution that could be used, uh, throughout the, uh, town formerly, uh, known as, uh, 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 as a very wet place, um, water field. So we believe we have solved all of the problems. We will certainly continue to work with VHB as we have with everybody.
Yeah, I believe that, uh, Todd is on this call.
Terrific.
I just wanna make sure that we schedule appropriately, so we're not just meeting and spinning wheels. We would like to meet and
Yeah.
Really keep in the meat of everything. Um, so Todd, uh, if you're here, do you have, would you be able to get those revised drawings and stuff? Or is that accept, is that doable?
Um, yeah, we communicated with Brian Zirkelli today that, um, the full written response and updated package will go back to VHB next week.
Which would not be in time pretty much for the twenty-third meeting. It's going back to VHB next week and then VHB would basically, you know, the town engineer is asking for some type of a comment letter from VHB based upon your revised design bef- um, so it looked like the twenty-third, there won't be a revised uh, memo from VHB by that time.
So with that, uh, to the members of the planning board, um, the twenty-third, uh, hearing date, uh, is not gonna work in terms of doing a continuation to that time certain.
Madam Chair, i- if we could, if we could consider that just for a moment, please, I'm sorry to interrupt. But the Conservation Commission issue is, uh, uh, separate, obviously, we're gonna fulfill those requirements. But if we can move forward with the planning board, this is a, uh, Conservation Commission issue. And Todd, perhaps you can better.
Finish what I was gonna recommend to the members of the planning board. Instead, it sounds like that most likely the March second might be a better date versus the twenty-third. We have a lot of things that we need to get done before, uh, for town meeting as well and things we need to discuss. I was wondering if the second of March may work with your schedules to.
Oh, I, I'm gonna have to interrupt you there, Heather, because March second, we have, uh, that is the time that we scheduled for our, um, for a public hearing related to the North Main Street study, which is off of a current, our current planning board meetings are March ninth and the twenty-third. So we put that to the second. If you wanted to do, I don't know, you know, ninety minutes of that, I just wanna let you know that we do already have kind of ninety minutes, maybe even closer to, you know, and maybe an hour forty-five of, of an agenda item already.
Okay, so members of the planning board, what would you like to do? And there are crickets.
Well, I, I guess.
I, I can't find my mute button.
Oh, go for it, dear.
You found it, yeah.
I found it. Maybe I should turn it back on. Um, I am, um, you know, I'm torn. I wanna see this project move forward. I don't know. Uh, I'm fine with the March second date if that is required. Um, I really, with the understanding that the development team will meet the requirements would be, I'm, I'm, you know, that can be, if, if we do actually come to a decision on our next meeting, that can certainly be a, obviously, that would be a contingency of our decision. So I don't feel it absolutely necessary that we get the report from engineering on the, on the flood issues. Although we obviously, it has to be part of the final package. So I, I guess I'm open to, to me, doing it in, uh, in February, on the twenty, whatever.
No, I'd go with a February date.
All right.
He- Heather, just to point out also, typically what we've done in the past on something like this, um, is that uh, we would say that obviously they have to comply with the order of conditions from the conservation. It doesn't mean anything. But it's really, then if there's any substantial changes to the exterior of the building due to, due to that, then it potentially could come, you know, come back for review. But, but that's how, that's how typically we would do this. Is if it's not affecting anything on the outside, uh, and it passes all of the necessary, uh, wetland protection by law and goes through CONCOM, we're not involved there. So it's like, you know, that's just how we've done it in the past. So I, I don't see it as an absolute necessary thing in order to make a decision.
For CONCOM's part of it. Uh, for Beth, are you comfortable with that then? For Concom's part of it, uh for Beth, uh are you comfortable with that then, for the twenty third to have a memo? On behalf of everything you can review outside of conservation commissions work?
Yeah, so um I told Brian, we just got the plans last week that I would have a memo um to him by the end of this week with anything, you know, kind of site related comments that we have, but again, we're fully relying on the peer reviewers for the flooding and stormwater review of this project, so you won't get any additional comments from me in that piece.
And from traffic, you're all set there as well, Beth?
Yeah, again, I I mean, um I mentioned to Brian, my only concern was just with the loading piece, um you know, with the uh with the loading entrance for Fells Hardware being on Vine Street and the loading parking being on Main Street, what I don't want, you know, i- is for trucks, you know, to find it easier to park on Vine Street, to bring the deliveries into the Fells Hardware and whatever the design team can do to prevent that from happening, I think is important. So we don't have trucks parking in that area.
Sounds good, so it sounds like the motion stands on the twenty third. Uh, and second and roll call vote please. To continue the hearing on the twenty third at time certain eight P M.
Hannah, aye.
Chariotus, aye.
Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Von Marying, aye, motion passes, five oh, we'll continue the hearing on February twenty third at eight P M. Thank you everyone for joining us, thank you for everyone who spoke and contributed their thoughts and feedback and questions. And also, uh thank you for um all of our consultants for helping uh us through this process, along with all town staff. Um, moving onward to our agenda, I would like to return back to Washington and Swanton review of the RFP. And um we left off, I think on page eight, but before we proceed, I'd like to actually bring up my point that I have regarding Washington Swanton, is when town meeting took up warrant article for this property, the only language that was available in the warrant article was for affordable housing, that the land would be acquired to do affordable housing. There is no mention of commercial on this site. Um, so I mentioned it to Brian today, cause it it kind of, it's unclear to me if they actually can proceed in this without town meetings consulting, um because there's not, no reference of commercial in the presentation and then also the um the overviews that they had done of this land for that to town meeting, which we never really saw until the day of town meeting pretty much, only addressed affordable unit units and those proposals only showed there's no commercial in there. And now the RFP includes commercial, I do think on my personal perspective, that commercial should be included in that, I think that is but I don't think that actually is what town meeting uh authorized this left board to proceed with, so my concern with this RFP is that it does not meet what came before town meeting, um. So.
I think I think it's a very good point.
Cause I think it, I I like the direction the RFP, I think it's, I don't, it's just a technicality and it's an issue, cause we, that's what was sold to town meeting, that's what they told town meeting they were gonna do. And now we're doing something different and so I don't mean to be like the stick in the mud, but I I think there's issues here. I think that's the problem with this whole process for Waterfield and Swan, is that there hasn't been, we weren't part of going to town meeting. We didn't review, we weren't part of those conversations of that warrant article. We didn't, so we didn't talk about, well, you actually, it's not just affordable housing, you wanna look at also mixed use, there's no language of mixed use in any of the language to town meeting. So it's just, it's a big sticky wicket um that I wanted to bring up, is cause it kind of impacts this whole thing, but.
Madam Chair.
Does counsel? Yeah.
The counsel question, yeah.
Yeah, it's a counsel question. But I just wanna make sure you guys knew about it, cause uh I would think the planning board should just note it and let the parties be that take care of it. Any comments? Okay, Maureen, uh we can go back to where you are at, you're on page eight, I believe.
Um, well, I would be jumping to page ten from there.
Can we stop at page eight real quick?
Uh, one one, a point of order, if you might.
Yep, go ahead, D M.
I I think Dennis was trying to say something.
Oh, Dennis.
Uh, thank you, uh Chair and Dab, I just wanted to say the obvious, when the neighbors were asked what they wanted, they highlighted some activity used at the ground floor. And uh from a town design point of view at an important corner that made sense. It doesn't mean that the developer has to do retail at the ground floor or a communal facility. That would be viewed as a positive, but I understand your point, I I just wanted to add that, thanks.
Yeah, I think, me, I mean, I don't wanna speak on behalf of the board, but I'm gonna just, you guys correct me, you can jump in, but I I think that the, we agree that, we agree with that sentiment. The problem is, is the process and the steps taken to get to this RFP to submit it, so that it goes before town meeting, is to secure the land. The reason the land is being secured is for affordable housing. Not mixed use, is what the warrant article said, so there's a technicality in that and then going to an RFP that is a mixed use with affordable housing component in it, so it's uh and just making sure that this is actually the right steps, it's not that the design and the RFP as it's proposed is something we're against, it's the technicality of how you work through securing land through eminent domain to then go and do an RFP on it. Uh, Dab, I know you had questions too, I just wanna make sure before we move on, was there anything in that we've gone through already?
Uh, no, actually, all of my comments have to do with the uh the design uh criteria at the end.
Okay, so we'll go, we'll keep going through just the pages as we go. Brian, uh and planning board, I wanna point out that this is not our project and Brian is taking the lead on this in terms of project coordination. This goes back to, they keep poaching our staff. You're excellent, you do amazing job, you know exactly what you're doing, but it's, this is getting to a point where it's like you know, we're not I don't know, I just, it's, I I don't know.
Well, this is part of why we need economic development staff. And that's, you know.
Really, economic development, this is really about housing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, yeah, you're right, um.
Fall under the planner's role, I think the bigger question, but I don't wanna spend time on it, that's the planning board should be in having some role in this, and that's why I keep putting language in there that at least, and this is this is really asking for peanuts here, chump change, um just to have a call out who these feedback from local boards and committees, who are they? Well, we're one of them and we ought to be named, um frankly, as you all recall, with the RFP for the Waterfield site, uh we had the joint meeting with the select board and agreed that there would be a meeting, uh joint, another joint meeting with the planning board and select board, so we'd have feedback before it went forward to town meeting. And then um it that was taken out um by the chair of the select board. So anyway, with that in mind, I'd like to just jump ahead to page ten, um and ask that it's under the um development concept narrative and it's under uh B, discussion, there we go, of the physical plan. And then the second to last bullet point is how does your proposal consider the previous design concepts for the property? Well, I was as liaison to the um design review committee, just listening, they had comments which were similar to my own reaction, which was the Melanson proposal is not something we care for. It's not clear at all in this uh RFP that that's in there and we don't care for it. So I think that having anybody start to address that, I I just think that should be stricken. I I, we're going too far down the path with pro- proposals that this board had no, um did not review, did not endorse, and just, so anyway, you guys can um.
There also was no public, they really, for the uh the design concepts, well, first of all, there was just one. And that was for a friendly forty B, and that was a very preliminary, you know, even in that meeting that when we asked questions, they didn't have a lot of the answers, so it's very, very preliminary, wasn't all the kinks or if it was even feasible. The other part of it is that the studies that the select board did, we never saw until we we, it was just how many units can you cram in here on the site? And so I don't think, and there was appropriate public feedback to include those at this point, to say that you need to meet these design concepts because they were not vetted by not only us, but also the community at large.
Yeah, I I agree with both of you, and I further think that it confuses the issue. Because we want them to follow the design standards in this RFP, we don't want them to follow. I mean, that's the whole point of bringing in Dennis and Ha- and Cheryl and getting this thing out, working on it, so uh there's no point in looking back, we want them to look forward, so I would strike that as well.
Yeah, we we, this is Cheryl and Dennis, uh you probably remember this as well, um the the designs were put into the body of the RFP and we asked for it to at a minimum go to the appendix, and I I completely agree with what you're saying, I did not see this um this reference to previous design concepts um bullet point before, so I would I would remove it as well, I don't think it's a good design solution and um it's, yeah.
Cheryl, you're, as you're, uh you are a representative um in that committee, so if you would um bring that back with um when this draft is uh reviewed again, it's not just you speaking now, you're being, um you're speaking for all of us.
I understand that, Maureen, thank you, I I do believe that um that we we did focus in on on Dennis um expressing the the design um, you know, bringing what he had written and everyone has worked on for so many years, bringing that to um the design standards to this, but not, not um trying to um end up with a developer who comes back with an exact replica of what what the pictures look like, but we did want to make sure that people were including three dimensional views of the corner and of of any of their design concepts, and I think that's where um that's probably where that um design or that concept being represented was thought of as an advantage, but um I I did see someone else make a comment about taking um those elevations and that um perspectives out of the um RFP altogether, appendix included, so I I'm in agreement with that. And we'll put that forward.
Thank you. Uh, okay, uh page ten?
Yeah, and then it's similar on page sixteen, um it says concept drawings from Melanson proposal, it's under the appendices.
So you want tr- twenty eight stricken, and I don't even know why C V S is on there, but it didn't mean.
Just a quick thing, so these are the appendices, this is basically done specifically to um that we know that that whoever's going to apply for these is going to ask for these things. There's no, oh, there was a previous C V S, okay, what level, can we see that, I mean, there's no doubt, um uh uh and we all kind of agreed, I was also at the design review committee meeting uh that at the very least, we said that everything should be here, but there is talk of of striking it completely, the plans from C V S, honestly, they're gonna be asked for, so it's a question of, we could totally take them out and then put them up on a website, for example, which we've done previously for Waterfield, so maybe the, you know, the answer is that we put these appendices, if they re- really want them out, obviously not the design standards and the site feasibility study, but it's kind of everything else uh between their concept drawing, the site plan, uh those two, everything else could be on a website.
So if.
In the design review committee meeting, as you know, they were clear, they did not like the Melanson proposal. They asked to have it out, so they said they didn't want it, and there's a concern about if it's going to be left in, then it's it needs some ki- I don't think it should be, but if it were in, and it needs some kind of language that says this has not been reviewed nor endorsed.
Yeah, I I I agree, I think we should remove it, I think that it provides visual clue cues that we perhaps don't want.
Right.
And if, and I I think putting it up on the website is is an appropriate way of I mean, this is, this is our direction for how they should look at things. So let's not, let's not just confuse the issue.
I think it also goes back to um whatever it was, page five or whatever earlier, where I said we need to be explicitly clear that C V S was an appli- application that was approved, it was appealed and appealed withheld. So that when you look at the C V S, you know exactly the history of it and that why I did not proceed. And Melanson is a whole nother ballgame, because that was a, really a proposal that even it was like so preliminary and it was just, uh, okay, so now we're gonna talk instead about commercial, that we're gonna talk about uh mixed use and this is what we're thinking, let me get your feedback, so we can go to the drawing board and really go to it, so it's, and it wasn't, it was one session and one meeting and you know, it didn't go through any, the planning board didn't really partake in it, I mean, we were there, but I just, I think it's, it is misleading to the people of RFP, and I think it's unfair to them unless it explicitly states what it is and what it's from and where it stood in the process and that it wasn't reviewed and it wasn't vetted and.
Yeah, and it was, there is no, the town had nothing to do, in a sense, with this the Melanson proposal. It was their work, they did it, so I I don't, I think it's inappropriate.
I I agree with pulling it, I just think with the C V S, let's just, when you go back, Brian, look at, let's be explicitly clear of the language to request, or whoever's gonna write memo.
No, no, well, the good, the good thing is that between, you know, Dennis, Cheryl and myself, you have three people of that working group, I, we are hearing the message and I you don't have to convince us, period.
No, do, aren't we, are we gonna write a memo back, or I guess?
Uh, I can certainly put, I can certainly put our points together and have it, um you know, run by the, run by the chair, uh run by you before, um but I've been taking notes here on the specific pages um and also agree with all the sentiments so far, so it's not a heavy lift for me, Cheryl or Dennis.
Yeah, I'm working up the PDF as well, so we'll, we'll be prepared for the next meeting.
Yeah, I also think now too, um pending on if we perceive the vote to Cheryl, that'll give you that you have the vote of the planning, the full planning board versus before is almost you're, you're kinda left to fend for yourself. I mean, it was your own personal opinion, but now you'll have our support behind you as well. Uh, more, uh we're going on to page sixteen, do we miss some, any comments between ten and sixteen?
I'm fine, uh, the next thing would just, is it, and then maybe Dab his comments, but the one, I mean, I was pleased to see in the design standards things li- or there are a couple phrases, one was on page five, uh at design goals as determined by the planning board, bon- board zoning appeal, well, it needs to be edited and town planning staff. Um, I'm wondering, and how is the planning board, also page six? Um it it also says planning board and board bo- board of zoning appeal, that all needs to be clarified.
That's true, I didn't know which what to write, to be honest.
Well, it needs to be figured out here, I do think that there should be explicit, um it because this has to go in as a friendly forty B, or it's a forty B, it's a forty B, but because it's going that route, it's going to be before this um uh zoning board of appeals, and as a result, there needs to be an explicit uh what um sequence, so that the input from the planning board is secure.
So does that mean we need to um specify a s- a schedule of how of of how things are gonna proceed, is that what you're saying, Maureen?
Well, maybe not a schedule, but at least a um explicit statement that the planning board will be, I mean, we're advisory to the Z P A, but I I don't know, uh is that enough?
Well, uh is this language not strong enough?
Uh, it's, I would say it's murky.
Well, yeah, what what are the design goals, I believe these design standards are well, I think this is what we should shape, rather than necessarily say anything to mo- it's, the sentence is saying, you know, to to effectively achieve the overall architectural and town design goals as determined, I think it's really as determined by this document.
Then we don't need an exception.
Well, I I mean, there's no doubt, like um Maureen said, that this will go to the zoning board of appeals with comments from the D R C, planning board, historical commission and disability access commission and police and fire and engineering, so that's gonna happen no matter what, but if we're actually talking about a town design goal or to, you know, I think it actually has to do with this document and not with any body.
I I agree with you, um I'm just wondering if this document encompasses everything we want, then why do we need to have an exception? If we were to simply strike out the whole. If we were to simply strike out the whole thing about.
It's an exception to the standards. If there's gonna be an exception to the standards. At the end of the day, the exception would still only be from the standards from the zoning board of appeals. You could say with recommendations from the planning board, but.
Let, let me, can I say why that's in there?
Sure.
We constantly get architects and developers who think. And I'm not talking about the earlier project. In my lifetime, they all think they have great ideas. And they say, well, we, this is too rigid. So now we say, or I've said. Well, if you have a good idea and it meets the goals. We'll go with it. I can tell you honestly, no one has ever achieved that. So they follow back, they fall back on the design standards.
I think it's worse to say and it's, cause then they'll say this. I think that's worse. Sorry, but I'll leave it to you guys.
Well, so I'll tell you is it's worked in the past, but I have no problem taking out anything.
So, uh, I mean, I guess where I'm coming from is I think there's enough flexibility in the way the design standards have been written. That, I mean, there, there are a lot of qualitative statements in here, which. Can be interpreted. There's a range of interpretations that should encompass. Acceptable designs.
Yeah, I agree with you, Dea.
So I think you can strike that last sentence, an exception to the standards. Cause there is a lot of wiggle room in these. So the last sentence of the elements of form could be stricken and just says introduction. The thrust of the development standard is to maximize design quality, integrate all projects into the neighborhood and streetscape and then move on to a height.
I would be comfortable with that.
Me too.
Okay, next.
Um, let's see. So I have. Some typos and some, I have an overall, um, comment about the design standards. And I recognize a lot of, um, that, that a lot of the stuff from CBD has been moved in here. But it still is a flavor of it not quite matching. Um, and some of it's just language that needs to be cleaned up, I think. But, um, there's just a typo if we get to, um, on that page B, scale proportion of elements. And, um, let's see, paragraph number two. Oh, shoot. Are my pages off?
I don't think we should do typos in this meeting.
No, no, no. This is, there's a statement which says each project may need to submit for review must be accompanied by. And I believe I have that on the wrong page.
I think the traditional neighborhood height around this vicinity is not three stories. I think it's two to two and a half stories.
It's true.
Which is on page five. It says two to three stories, which means they're gonna go to four, but the actual height is two to two and a half stories.
That's correct.
It's the actual topography that makes them look taller. Because they're all on a hill going up.
Okay.
I didn't, I don't, yeah, that. It's probably the majority are lower, but at that corner where we're talking about there being a. You know, an opportunity to. Address a very pow- you know, a strong corner with potentially some retail at the bottom. I. I, I'd rather leave it. A little more flexible than to end up with, you know. Um, someone really saying, look, we really couldn't do, do retail because of your height restrictions. It's just not gonna happen.
Oh, I just saying what the buildings around it are. They're all two and a half stories. It's, they're not three stories. Says that the traditional neighborhood height, what is the traditional neighborhood height around there? It's all.
So when you say three, three stories, you don't count the, the attic space, the windows up at the top?
That's why you call it two and a half.
Okay, got it.
It's zoning.
Okay, I, I have now discovered my. I've discovered my, my problem is we're at page five and I was at page one. And so you're still at page five. If you could go back.
You know what? It's ten fifteen. I'm gonna fall asleep soon right here with my video.
Okay.
I can't.
Okay, so let's go to. The second paragraph in B. Uh, it's just, you know, the one right below it. Each project may need to submit for review, must be accompanied by, okay, so it's gotta be one or the other.
Can some of us be done outside this meeting? I caught that too. This isn't the time.
Yeah, well, I, I, I have, you know, I have a lot more.
What's the timing for us to give these edits?
Well, I thought we had to give them by the end of the week.
Just change it out to each project shall review.
Yeah, yeah.
Shall be accompanied by.
Okay.
To Heather's, Hannah's question, the, the, the idea was to go, go through this and to develop a memo to give to the select board by, like, yeah, by the end of the week. That, you know, that I would send something to the end of, by the end of the week, uh, encompassing all of these comments.
It's just feeling very detailed for after ten PM and we're not very far. So. Uh, is there a lot of these that we do by email? And if someone has something high level. That they have an issue with, we talk about that?
Sure. I unfortunately will not be able to do anything until Friday morning at the earliest. So let's get to page three under open space. No, okay, you got it. Two more pages. I'm numbering them based on the, the numbers on the bottom of the, uh. The page there. Yeah, okay, right there. So if we get to, um, A, open space on that page. There's, there's a, I'm, I'm, there's a confusion I have about what exact, where exactly the open space will be. So first off, a minimum of ten to twenty percent doesn't make any sense. We have to choose ten or twenty. You can't give them a range, otherwise it's not a minimum. But there's also a question, is this all going to be in the resident courtyard? Is it also, I mean, uh, there's various statements about open space throughout this. And I think there's a confusion about where it's going to lie. And is it going to be open space that's just for residents? Um, so there's, there's a couple of comments on that. And now that's just a broad comment. There's a number of places. We can move on to. Um, one of my concerns is there's, there's, if we go to page four very quickly. Um, again, there's confusion as to how, I think there's, if we go to, uh, A, under retail. Um, it talks about contiguous frontage on both sides of the street. I think there's, again, there's, there's confusion here between what's specific to this site and what's been taken from the CBD. And if we could clean that up. There's a, if we go to page five, there's a discussion about height. And that's, uh, under elements of form, height. Um, and it states no building element may project vertically beyond the maximum height allowed. But there is no indication of what that height will be. If this is a forty B, they can go beyond what's under the zoning. So we don't have a, we don't have a height that's specified, so I don't know how it all fits in. There's also a, if we're gonna talk about widening, and this goes on to. Further pages, if we're gonna talk about widening public sidewalks and we're talking about street walls and setbacks. The two concepts kind of. You know, if you maintain the street walls of the existing of, of the rest of the street. But then you wanna push back the public sidewalks. There's a tension there. So we have to decide which is more important.
The intent is it's a five foot setback at both sides. One for screening. Um, because there will be a si- it, there's a great slope on one, on the side street. And, uh, on the other one, if there's retail, uh, you want outdoor seating near it. That was the thinking. The problem is there's no drawing, there's no design. So I'm incorporating as many of the things that are important. Not knowing even what I wanna do. Um, so I'm trying to include everything. And I agree it needs editing. As far as ten to twenty percent of open space. Ten percent is an interior courtyard in my head for the people living there because there's nothing else. The rest is parking behind. And the rest of the open space is the five foot setback, a buffer to existing neighborhoods, houses. It, but again, it's. It, it's trying to put a design into guidelines.
Yeah, I just, I just found the, the, the phrase, it was, it was confusing to someone coming in saying you have a minimum of ten to twenty percent. Which case I'll say, okay, I'll take ten percent.
No, no, that, that was for somebody to say what it is.
Okay.
I'm, that's my first draft and it was, it's one of the two. And the courtyard by itself is ten percent.
On the center business district, we have twenty percent.
Yeah, I think we should go with the twenty, especially since this is a, a less urban area.
Again, the interior courtyard is ten percent plus everything else is twenty percent.
Got it. So we'll clarify that, that.
Yeah, and, and then I think that.
Can I ask why this, why you use the word interior? Because. Quite frankly, the, the, the density that we're calling for here. And the way the site is, the street is higher than the site. We're gonna end up with an interior that's just a big shadow box. It's just. It could end up being that if we say it has to be interior. So I'm.
Well, it has afternoon light and it would be off the lobby. And it would buffer part of the parking lot. If you put it on the outside, on the sidewalk. Um, I mean, you could do that, but. It, it seems to me I'm more concerned about the residents in this building having a place to hang out.
But why can't we just see what we get like we did for Waterfield?
Yeah, I think so too. I'd rather leave it.
Prescriptive.
Leave it open. People can be like thoughtful and designers rather than rule.
I, I will do what you want. I, all I can tell you is if you don't guide them, forget it.
Well, we can guide them with a twenty percent minimum and then they can define whether it's on the outskirts or if it's an interior courtyard.
They're all gonna, okay, fine.
Well, we, we definitely want inter- we want private space for the residents. So, um, I understand the tension there.
Why don't we call it resident amenity as opposed to public amenity in terms of open space?
That makes sense.
Yeah, cause I don't know that I would want them to include widened public sidewalks as part of their open space. Cause that's gonna be part of, you know, as you, as you rightly point out, you can put tables there, et cetera. So that's actually a commercial benefit. Rather than a benefit to the residents.
All right. I like it. Resident amenity, twenty percent minimum.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, I, 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 I'm just thinking you were close to finish. So I just have one big question for the planning board. In terms of my, you know, my experience level and one of the things that's in here about rating the, the contract or the developers. So.
Go ahead. I will, I will put all my stuff in a, a very short memo. So go ahead.
Thank you. If you go back to, um. The, the matrix that is being presented on how to rate the, um, developers. It's an evaluation criteria and in that we decided that. You know, not all evaluation criteria should be created equal. And this was, um, this was put together. I don't, Brian, you might need no more. People were supposed to, people on the, on the committee were supposed to give their thoughts about this. I'm curious about. The idea that, um, that the developer, since this is a, uh. Turn, it's being done in terms of land disposition. How, how exactly? We need to pick a developer who's gonna succeed, right? Who's not gonna like. Take us down the road on a design for six months and then it just blows up because they didn't really do. Um, the due diligence on how to buy this property from the town and. These are just things I don't understand well enough. Um, and you guys talk a lot about forty-two B and, and things that are. I'm just starting to get a grasp of. So I was wondering. This being on the low end and one X, is that? It, should there be concern about that? And then are there other ones in this matrices of, you know, priority? Um, that, the evaluation criteria that, you know, how do we wanna see this succeed? It's gonna, we're gonna put a lot of work into picking someone. And I'm just wondering if, if you guys had any thoughts about this, uh, rating system.
You're talking about number ten specifically, that they're only giving it one percent weight?
Exactly. And I'm just not certain. I, I haven't, I don't have experience with this. With how much is gonna have to go into this for a developer to buy the land from the town and. If this, if this just needs to be something that they spend more time proving to the town before they get selected.
It's actually an interesting point that you make, cause in the past, when we've had developers who've come in, who've been kind of blasé, like you just tell me what you want and I'll do it. Right? We've had that. We had it at the farm. Um, and they tend to, um, not actually come in with concrete, really strong ideas. And they kind of, they get pushed to the bottom because they're just kind of not concrete and s- stable. But I don't know. In the rating, even if you put it at three X, it doesn't. It'll give it more points, but it's not gonna, it really shouldn't. If they can't come in with a clear concept, then why are they being reviewed at all?
Well, I, I thi- I think the, the, the one example we have of where we use this matrix was at Waterfield. And the fact that we required such a high percentage of. SHI or, or subsidy or. Deeded affordable housing meant that they actually had to go in and get. Um, ver- they had to go hook up with various government programs. And there was a lot of analysis of their, of, I think, point number ten. Which is, I think is something similar to, correct me if I'm wrong, on the Waterfield RFP. So I think that. We will get the details required to evaluate the product, the pro- the project. Um, just because of where they're going to have to get the funding.
Because of the amount of affordable housing that we're requiring and, and, uh, as a three X is what you're saying?
Yeah, because they won't be able to, 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 um, get the money to build it if they. In order to make up for the losses on the affordable units, they typically have to go in and get, um, government funding.
Okay, so then they'll have a real clear financial. Model. Um, that will support number ten.
That's my impression, but the rest of the board may disagree with me.
Well, when we scored the Waterfield ones. We weren't the ones, um, I'm talking about the committee. We weren't the ones looking at the financials because that wasn't our area of expertise. So we ended up not even really scoring that one. Isn't that right, Brian? We just scored. All the other categories and I think someone else looked at their, their private financials.
Yeah, so a number of mass housing, um, professional, so a number of professionals at mass housing. Um, did, did look at those financials. This is more of checking of a box in number ten, meaning that it's not evaluating. Um, the, those terms. It's saying, di- did they supply those terms? And then we can obviously talk, you know, there's, there'll be. A lot of debate at FinCom and others about, about those terms. This is more, did they provide it? Did they outline those key terms?
Okay.
So it's less concerned about the value, the value of that response.
Okay, all right. That's really, that's helpful.
All right, we're reaching breaking point of everyone, including myself. So.
Yeah, I think I.
I'm good to go.
Can we get a motion?
Wait, hold, hold on. Sorry, Heather. So the idea is that, so I, I have all these comments. I, I've copied them down. I'm gonna develop them into a memo to give to the select board before the end of the week. If there's gonna be anything else that you haven't said this evening, that you would like to get into that MO, email me directly.
And when do you need that by, Brian?
I would like to get this to the select board on Friday.
Right. So when do you, when do you wanna drop that for input to you?
Uh, yeah, I guess I could, you know, Thursday morning. Is that possible? Thursday, early aft- early afternoon that I could.
I will, I will, I will, I will try. I will, I will not just try, I shall do it. I will, I will not just try, I shall do it.
We do a, can I entertain a motion from the planning board to allow me to sign on behalf of the board based on the compo- com- composition to make judgment? To represent the board in this situation? If they can sign it.
So moved. So moved.
Yes. Hold there, I'm sorry.
Um, so because there's some additional information coming in that the planning board gives me the authority to represent the planning board. At this point to include or not include pending on. Its validity to our conversation and the direction overview of the direction the planning board just provided. It gives us, it gives me the ability to sign it so it comes from the entire planning board without the whole planning board having to view it.
I got you, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I made, I said, I moved that we do that, we authorize you.
All right, and there's a second, which is Deidre, correct?
No, I thought I was the first, but I'll be the second.
Maureen's the second, I'm sorry, Deidre's the first, Maureen.
Doesn't matter, I'll be third.
Yes, you got it, we're like, yeah, she's like, all right, roll call vote please.
Hannah and I.
Curious eye.
Oyster eye.
Wolf eye.
Von Marying eye, motion passes five oh, um, we'll develop that, I'll sign the memo, we'll get it off to the select board before the end of the week. Well, before our end of the week, it might be the afternoon, Brian's end of the week. Um, so on that note, I think I, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Removed.
All right, Heather, Hannah, second by Deidre, we roll call vote please.
Hannah and I.
Curious eye.
Oyster eye.
Wolf eye.
Von Marying eye, motion passed five oh, the planning board meeting has adjourned. Thank you so much to Win Cam, thank you Nancy, to our recording secretary, all the staff, all of our consultants and also the public for all your comments and contributions at our meeting today. We will see you next, at our next meeting on February twenty-third, which will also have the eight PM hearing for Main Street. Thank you everyone and have a great night.
Too, bye, bro.
Thank you.
Good night.